I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. And those of you who are here in attendance, if you didn't sign the sheet, there's one on the trolley there by the front door.
Please sign in.
We have to reorganize the board, and nominations are now open for the position of Chair.
I'd like to nominate Kurt Hagis as Chair.
Second.
Seconded by Chris. Any other nominations? We have a motion to close nominations and cast a ballot in the name of Kurt Hagis as Chair.
Do you need that motion? I still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Congratulations, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a motion for nomination of a Vice Chair. We have one volunteer. So I'd like to nominate Neil Cammon. So there's one nominee. Are there any other nominations? Closing calls. Yeah, so I'd like to close nominations and ask that the...
Clerk?
Clerk. Cast one vote for Neil as Vice Chairman. Neil Cammon. All those in favor? I guess nobody has to vote, right?
No, I mean it's, yeah.
I forgot. Okay, next is Clerk. Do we have any nominations for Clerk?
Do we have any indication if anybody at the table or not at the table is interested in the position?
Not that I know of.
Shall I nominate somebody who's not here, who is on our board?
I think we can do that.
Keeping with tradition.
Keeping with tradition.
If you don't show up, you get nominated. Go ahead.
Can a member hold two positions?
What's that?
Can a member hold two positions or not?
On the board, do you know? One elected position.
This clerk is of the board. That takes minutes when Secretary...
Right.
And correspondence, right. So are you going to nominate someone?
Well, I actually will volunteer to hold that position if that's doable. I have an ulterior motive.
Till next month.
Till June, and then we can reorganize the Clerk position.
So...
But I'm not going to move myself, so if people are comfortable with that, somebody can move that.
I move that Neil Cammon be appointed to the position until then.
Okay, so first you would have to nominate.
Okay, I nominate Neil Cammon.
Neil until June.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for Clerk? So I'd like to instruct the Clerk to cast a vote and close nominations for Clerk. What's next?
SU delegates.
SU.
SU delegates now, as far as I understand. SU delegates are...
Chair and two others.
Chair and two others. And I do know that Jeff is interested in this position.
I would like to nominate Jeff Glassberg for this position.
Okay.
We'll second him.
Now, can we have two nominations for two positions at the same time?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Kurt and Jeff, you need one more.
Yeah. Chris? Carrie?
Come on, come on, come on.
I'm willing. Ah, I heard that.
I just didn't...
I would like to nominate Mr. Chris Guzino as well.
Okay, very good. So we have two nominations for two positions, so I'd like to instruct the Clerk to close, or I'm going to close nominations and instruct the Clerk to vote. One for Jeff and one for Chris. And then last but not least, I believe, we need to have a representative on the Hannaford Career Center Board. And, it's not listed there, although I tried to get Glory to put both positions. We need to have an at-large member elected for...
Someone coming from the community.
Yeah, somebody coming from the community.
I do have at-large.
Yeah, so there's someone from our Board and someone at-large. Since no one ran to be elected at-large, so this would be a great time if anybody in the audience wants to get involved. Anybody? Did you do that on purpose?
Tim, I see you hiding over there.
Kurt, are you going to continue and...
I will until necessary.
Thank you, Kurt.
Yeah. Tim, did you just volunteer? No. Is anyone else of a technical nature, or agricultural nature, or art?
Know somebody?
Or STEM? If you think about it, everybody on the Board and in the administration and students and public, if you think of anyone, the only thing I was thinking of was perhaps if there is an HR Director at United Technologies, perhaps going there and seeing if there was someone who would be willing to be part of that Board. I think that would be a great way to get real-life experience.
Could put something out on front porch.
Okay. There's no one open for that, so I'd be glad to continue as the Board member until we find someone. Do we need to go through a nomination for that? Yeah.
With apologies, I will nominate Kurt Hagis.
Second.
Hannaford.
Meeting's tomorrow night. Any other nominations? Okay, I'd like to close nominations and have the Clerk cast a vote. So Bill Scott was the at-large and had to retire. So I'll start looking for that.
You want me to put something out on front porch for him?
Yeah, if you could.
Sure.
Do you have more than one?
More than one.
Affiliation?
No, I only have the Virgens, but I can cross-list it to Addison and Ferrisburg.
Okay, so are there any other nominations we need or positions? No?
I'm going to take a look at this, because I can't get mine open.
I think he needs an agenda over there.
So the next thing we need to do is, I've been trying to open it on my phone.
Oh, all right.
Is date and time of the regular meeting. In the past, we've been meeting on the first, or the second Monday of each month. Thanks.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM? Any other suggestions, or do we need to change it, or is there any discussion?
I'm happy with what we have, and if somebody has something else they want to put out there.
Do we need to move these three items?
Yep.
So date and time of regular meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion for the second Monday of March, or the second Monday of each month at 6:00 PM.
Second.
I need a motion first.
Motion. Okay, I saw moved that we keep the time the same on the second Monday of the month at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Okay. In the past, the newspaper of record has been the Addison Independent, which has online versions and PDF versions and is printed twice a week. Any motions?
Move to retain the Independent as a newspaper of record.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, committee assignments. I'm going to table the committee assignments at this point, because I'd like to have more discussions about what committees we'd like, and there are two chairs empty, so I believe those two chairs will be part of those committees. It's my intention to have committees that not only have responsibilities, but also will share in the authority of the Board. So I feel that it's necessary to get more done outside of this meeting. And I think right now that there should be a Building and Grounds Committee, Financial and Auditing Committee, and I'm open to any others. Policy Committee, excuse me. I'd like to table that for now. So the next thing on the agenda is entertaining motions for approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 10th.
Kurt, quickly, before we move on.
Yeah?
Do you know the status of a Ferrisburg member?
I have one person who's interested. I asked her to be a write-in candidate, and she didn't, so I need to contact her now.
Tell somebody that expressed interest or is considered for that.
Any kind of, any form of communication is...
To you, to Tom O'Brien.
To anyone, any one of us, and we'll get it to us. Do you know of someone?
Yes.
You want to tell me a name?
No.
Okay.
It's a secret.
Okay. Want to give me a hint?
Those are the best kind.
So I'm planning, the person who has expressed some interest is Shannon Warden. She's an Assistant Principal at BFA San Albans and a Ferrisburg resident. And I've only exchanged a couple of emails with her. So if we could get something done before the next meeting, that would be great. Okay, back to number three, approval of minutes. I'd like to entertain some motions.
Move to approve the minutes as drafted.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I have a clarification.
Thank you.
During public communication, C. Kaufman asked if FY '13 audits were complete, blah, blah. The balance forward on page 39 shows a deficit carried forward of 273, 805. Will this show up as actuals in FY '15? My reply was yes. And I want to clarify that it will show up in FY '15 because it's the second half of the deficit. So the first half was converted to debt. The second half will be included.
Hi.
I apologize.
It's okay. I've been waiting for you. And where is that, Kathy? And the business manager?
No, in public communication, so I was responding to a question.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't get the subtlety. Not that it's that subtle, but you're absolutely right, I should have captured it.
That's okay.
So you're not changing anything, you're just clarifying...
I'm clarifying.
That it's half of the deficit.
Right.
Yeah.
And you want that to be reflected?
I do.
Yes.
At the second, it's the, it's the same amount, but it's the second half.
Your reply was yes, because this will be the second half of the retired deficit.
Right.
Correct. Okay.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, or on the floor, to approve the minutes. There's a point of clarification and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, so I'm going to go back to the beginning of the meeting, now that we have all the expected members here tonight, and I'd like to go around and introduce ourselves, please. Want to start in?
I'm Ed Webley, I'm the co-principal at the upper school.
Stephanie Taylor, co-principal.
Glory Martin, administrative assistant to the superintendents.
Tom O'Brien, superintendent.
Neil Cammon, representative from Virgens.
Carrie Beebe, representative of Pan.
Lauren Childers, representative of Addison. I apologize for being late.
It's quite all right. Kurt Hagis, I'm the Chair, from Ferrisburg.
Chris Guzino from Virgens.
Wayne Howe, part-time principal over Addison Central School, part-time assistant superintendent.
Kathy Cannon, business manager.
Tia Hunt, junior student rep.
Emily Hudson, senior student rep.
So just to bring you up to speed, we've reorganized, and you were lucky enough not to be appointed to any of them.
Yet.
Thank you.
Okay. But we would love to have you express interest in areas that you might be involved with. I did not, I tabled the committee assignments, and we did have a Hannaford Career Center delegate at-large. I would continue that and that until we find someone from the Board, and we need someone from the community to appoint. So unless I hear from someone, I'm going to go to United Technologies and see if there's someone there that might be interested.
Is that the only committee?
The committees that, I'd like to set up committees for financial and audit, a committee for policy, and a committee for building and maintenance. And we've avoided doing that up to this point, because we wanted to make sure that we had a full board. And those committees will be with authorization and responsibility. So that, Tom, I just want to ask you again where you wanted to bring the discussion up to?
The discussion about the wellness policy, pull that up as part of education presentation.
Yeah. So that's 8B into educational.
And PBGRs is the other piece.
Yeah. And then discussion items, you were talking about putting that somewhere else?
Yeah, move that up to prior to Board communications.
Prior to Board. So for those of you following along, we're going to take 8B and put it after 4A, and take section nine, or item nine, and put it before item six. So that brings us to the PBGRs and PLP presentation. Is there someone here for that?
Just a quick question, though. You said that Lynn, when you spoke to me earlier, you said that Lynn, that Lynn was going to present wellness, and is that shorter than what you have to say, or same idea?
You operated the way you planned.
Okay. I just have to wait the computer off.
If I talk too fast, may Mr. Glassberg...
In French.
Allez, allez! Allons-y!
You have a problem, too. Please, okay.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Well, thanks.
So we've watched on some patterns, LA for two years.
So we've put together a bit of a slideshow, nothing particularly dramatic, just for you to follow along. What we also put together was, I guess, a notes page of each, so you can scribble on each slide if you so desire. Behind that are the nine performance-based graduation requirements. Behind that is a pamphlet or brochure that we handed out, well, we've updated it, but we handed it out last fall at the back-to-school night, so you may have a copy of that already. And then behind that are two articles, two recent, well, one's an op-ed piece, I believe, from the New York Times, "How to Get a Job at Google," I think it's the title, something like that. And then the other piece is from Forbes. I got them both online and just got, downloaded them as PDFs. But I thought that they would be helpful reading for you as far as helping to explain what we're trying to do here, as far as performance-based graduation requirements go. So, here goes. So what we wanted to do, I might keep saying aye, I apologize. What we wanted to do is to explain to you or to remind you of the timeline or the long process that we've been going through to get where we are today. To my count, it is now eight years. So we just wanted to talk through some of the things that we've done and what has happened in, though, these past eight years. And a lot of it is about transformation. So speaking about transformation as far as the students go, we're now looking to them as far as ownership of their learning. Personal learning plans will be in place, and I believe Ed will speak to this later about Act 77, and that is, it's a legislated item, so we can't skirt that one. On the bright side, performance-based graduation requirements and setting up the electronic portfolios and the learning experiences that our students will be having in the classroom and in the community are all, have all really prepped us, and we're, I think, a little bit ahead of the curve as far as being able to accommodate personalized learning plans. Let me grab my notes, just so I don't forget after all my work. So, yeah. So I think that here, what I wanted to talk about is just that, especially the learning experiences and the personalized learning are intertwined and will become a part of the student's electronic portfolio. Each student in the class of 2016 and 2017 has an electronic portfolio set up and started. How full those are yet depends on the student. But in each case, we're trying to get the students into the, what you'll see in some of the articles referred to as 21st century skills, the problem-solving, the collaboration, and the skills that are needed in higher ed and in the workplace. Transformation of the teachers is also something that's important as far as the performance-based graduation requirements and for the personalized learning plan. Teachers become, and we'll address that later when Matt talks about his Roland Grant, but teachers here have become morning-meeting advisors. So they are advisors to their students. And in such, there's two different ways we think about, or more than two different ways, we think about the morning-meeting advisor. We are an academic advisor as far as keeping on them with their grades and their coursework. We're an advisor as far as their social, emotional well-being, and we stay with them to get them up to graduation. We're also mentors to the students, and in many cases, especially now with performance-based graduation requirements, we're going to be able to be the experts or to help them find the experts in the pieces of learning that they are looking to put into their portfolio as far, as far as evidence in each section of their portfolio. And then the other thing that, the role that we're starting to evolve into is that we are facilitator of these learning experiences. We are a facilitator in the classroom, most specifically right now, for many of us, it's our content area, what our passion is and why many of us became teachers. But we're also starting to help facilitate the learning that's happening in the community, or expanding that to all of our students, not just the few that signed up for some of the community-based classes that are here at Virgens. Moving on, let's see. Yeah. So, and I think somebody mentioned earlier STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, and a lot of the education speak right now is about STEM, and as we were talking earlier, the new acronym, acronym STEAM, which is including the arts in science, technology, engineering, and math. So in these pieces, as a mentor to our students, we're going to be facilitating how they get to those places, but not specifically being the content teacher. I'm not a content teacher of technology. Can I help my student find someone who will support their technology needs in the classroom or outside? I will do my best. That's what our role is becoming. Transformation of the school. We have, we're not dramatically transformed schedule-wise as far as having evening classes where students come in after work and take math or science or whatever, but we have some flexibility in to, built into our schedule, one of which is the morning meeting and the callback system that we have built into our day, where we bring the students back to the classrooms, we allow for different types of remediation or enrichment. We also allow time for students to meet with their mentors. Many of our students in the class of 2016 and the class of 2017 are working on a year-long project that they hope to put into their portfolios, and it's a project that they're working on outside of class time. So one of the creative ways we've done that this year is by use, creatively using the half-days, the half-release days that we've had there. I think we've gone through four of them so far, we have one left, and what we've done is build on, acclimating our students to their electronic portfolios, but also helping the students get in touch with mentors or find some work time or workspace that helps them with that year-long project, so that they can really get that launched, which also then goes into the anytime, anywhere learning. For the timeline, it is, it's long and somewhat winding. For the timeline, it was 2006, I believe, that we received the first Department of Education Transformation Grant. And one of the pieces that really got us launched into performance-based learning, we were one of, I believe, two schools in the entire state that received that grant. I don't remember the amount, but it was enough to get us started. Was it, if it was $50,000? Okay. So that was a healthy pot of money to help us get going. Over the next few years, the faculty collaborated in meetings, and then a smaller group sort of added their brains to this, and we developed performance-based graduation requirements. They went through many, many iterations before the sheet that you have in front of you, which is the one that contains the nine performance-based graduation requirements. And with this transformation grant, the teacher-leader grassroots kind of growth came. So a lot of teachers learned facilitative techniques. A lot of the groups that are run in the building are now facilitated by teacher leaders, and the grant also allowed us school visits within Vermont, but also outside of Vermont, where we were able to take advantage of the learning that was going on in other schools that were looking towards performance-based learning. In 2009, we, Matt Deloitte, received the first Roland Grant. It's a Roland Fellowship. The Rollins are a couple who are based in Vermont, and they give out...
Lots of money.
Lots of money.
So I'll talk a little bit about the Roland Foundation, some of the work that we've done in that venue, and kind of how we've built on it more recently with the advent of some other opportunities that we've had. So as a result of kind of some of the work that we've done, both internally and across the state, as a faculty and as individual teachers, we've been afforded, remember to tell me, a lot of opportunities to engage in some great learning opportunities, whether it's through the League of Innovative Schools, that I think Ed and I went to their first meeting in 2000, and a long time ago, at the Gropone Center in scenic Concord, New Hampshire. And we've kind of been involved at different levels and in different capacities elsewhere. One of the things that we've been happy to be part of recently is thinking differently about the callback system and thinking differently of how to use that system. This is the first year that we're piloting, this is the first semester we're piloting an opportunity for students, and we have 14 kids enrolled in Introduction to College Studies that takes place two days a week here in the high school during school time, and that's a big change. And a lot of the legwork that has been done on that has been done by a couple of people right here. Beth Adrian and Susan Husk, who's our dual enrollment coordinator, and Beth, who's been facilitating the pilot grant for the personal learning plans. There's a lot of new words that seem fancy, but really... There's a lot of new words that are, seem fancy, but really just mean kids get what they need when they need it. And so part of what we've been working on is trying to understand how we can support students in the building and how we can bring college to them and work with, work with the, the community, both in-house and bringing the Vermont State Colleges to us. Another thing that we're doing as a result of that work that Susan's been integral to has been dual enrollment. So dual enrollment is part of Act 77. We're, we are one of the schools in the state that's offering both college credit embedded in our courses as well as high school credit. So that's a, that's a big change for us, and we're pretty happy about it, or I'm pretty happy about it. Anybody else? Okay, it's me. So that's some of the things that have grown out of, to me, have grown out of these kinds of systems that we've developed as a school.
Would you like questions now or at the end?
Probably at the end.
Okay.
So in 2010, we received this, our second Roland Grant. That was me. What that did, and I think one of the reasons they gave it to us was that, well, actually just a little side story, I went down for the interview and they told me, I met with the board last night and they're probably not going to give it to you, which was like, why did you let me come down to Manchester? Went through the interview process, explained that I believed that we, our school deserved the second grant because what we are doing with performance-based graduation requirements, with the development of performance-based tasks and the electronic portfolio and student-centered learning dovetailed beautifully with Matt's concept of the morning meeting advisory and the callback system that we were developing then. So low and behold, they changed their mind. So that was our second $100,000 from the Roland folks. And with that, and we are still doing these things, but the faculty developed performance-based assessments to embed within their courses. So we had a number of people who really rose to the challenge and, and said, I'm going to take what I do in my class and bring it that next level. We also created a template for students to self-design tasks so that we could edit or not edit, but monitor the level of rigor, the level of relevance, the level of vigor that the students wanted to do in their, in their personalized or student-initiated project. We started the development of the students' electronic portfolios, and we started drafting many iterations of assessment rubrics for either/or and sometimes the stu- the develop, the performance-based tasks that the faculty developed, but also for the portfolio itself so that we have an overarching way to look or, or lens to look at the portfolio, to see whether or not the, the child is meeting, is proficient or beyond. So a lot of work, and that started then, it's still going. And this was around the time, I believe also, that we received the invitation to the, the League of Innovative Schools, which is part of the New England Secondary School Consortium that, that Matt was talking about. I had our specialty coder ring that year. We also got, because I was on a sabbatical and had the time to collaborate with some people, a couple of Nellie May grants. In 2011, I became aware of or was made aware of what Nellie May Education Foundation was calling the Proficiency-Based Pathways Grant. Wrote an application with lots of editing from colleagues. We received, in the end, I believe we received around, we initially received 138,000. By the end of the day, they, they gave us a few more. I think we ended up with around 150,000 from Nellie May Education Foundation to continue the work that we've been doing. In December of 2012, I got a pretty neat phone call from Nellie May Education Foundation where they told me, we have an extra 50,000. Would you like it? So we were, we, it was a very nice phone call. And we were part of the, of the group that received the initial Performance-Based Pathways. We were of a select few. I think they told me four of the participants that were asked back and given varying amounts of money, and this is what we were given. So we're actually still spending their money. And that felt really good. So where we're at now in this timeline, class of 2016, if you, and if you look at your, the sheet that is the, for Genes learner profile, this is, those are the, the Performance-Based Graduation Requirements. So if you follow along, the class of 2016 is responsible for having evidence in the section of their portfolio under inquiry. They are responsible for evidence in their section about problem solving, and I think these are numbers three and four. They are responsible to have evidence in their portfolio under the section for writing, which is, I believe, seven. And then choice means they get to choose one of the remaining ones, and they must have evidence in a fourth section of their portfolio. For example, could be technology, could be arts. You know, I see a musician.
Athlete.
So there are ways that community service, right here looking at it, that this could be in their portfolios where they...
Younger.
But these are the kinds of examples of bringing life outside of school, putting it into the portfolio and showing their learning. So I'm an advisor to the class of 2017. So we're upping the ante. They have four that they're responsible for, so we added arts to this group. And again, they will choose another. Could be community service, it could be technology, et cetera, so that as we go, we're sort of incrementally amping up for each class. Right now, what we're doing, we're in the throes of refi- refining the assessment rubrics. We do have the two graduating classes that are currently marching up as we go. The e-portfolios are up and running and are, do contain varying levels of work depending on the students and the time that we've, we've been able to get them. We also received our first personalized learning plan grant from the now agency of education, and I'm willing to bet that we'll be presenting on that soon because Beth Adrian is the facilitator of that grant. So she'll be talking to you soon, too. And we are also refining the middle school capstone. Just a quick review, last year we piloted a capstone for, under the initial Nellie, Nellie May grant, and they took their learning, they, meaning the teachers and the students, passed on their successes and their challenges to the current eighth grade team who are refining the capstone. And from what I hear, it's going a bit more smoothly this year because they, they had a few heads up from the previous eighth grade team. Stephanie, do you want to add anything that's...
No, I, I think you summarized that pretty well. It's, this is my, it's year two, but it's my first year, and we, we're, we built in some more time and, and refined some of the elements, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going well.
Yeah. I mean, not that it was horribly last year, but it was a little more building it while flying it, to use the, the now cliched building the airplane while you're flying. 2014 and beyond, so next school year, the class of 2018 will be our third pilot class. We will raise the ante for them as well, so they'll have, will have another required. In addition, they'll have that choice and so on and so forth. We'll continue to work as mentors in small group and individual work, such as the year-long learning projects and any other self-student initiated projects that, that come along from the students. Again, this is about students owning their learning and us facilitating that learning. We will continue to work as advisors to our morning meetings and our students. And the class of 2019 should be our full launch class. They will graduate completely under the nine performance-based graduation requirements. I think I covered it all. That was a lot, I'm sorry, but I just, we really wanted to, you know, remind you, keep you up to date on all the, the awesome work that's going on.
Questions?
There. Comments, concerns?
The question I had was college courses embedded, or college credit embedded. What courses being taught that's...
Here, like the sections here.
Yeah.
So Nancy Ambrose's Statistics course and Michael Thomas's Writer's Workshop, and I don't know the VSC...
Are they referring to as Intro to College Camp, maybe?
But I, I mean, I'm...
It's not college courses.
So these are taught by VUHS teachers?
Yes.
And Intro to College Studies, I mean, just as in a, so the way that the voucher system, are you going to talk at all about this or no?
No, I'm not going to cover that.
Okay. So the, the new voucher system predicates that soon, as soon as your sophomore year is done, that you get a, a voucher, a three-credit voucher, and at the end of your junior year, you get one as, as well. So the intent behind offering Intro to College Studies, especially targeting sophomores, is that it is a separate funding source, therefore, so they've scaled back at the Community College of Vermont level, what that offering looks like so that they're, so a sophomore that takes it would know at the end of that course if they were likely to be successful in a course that is, that's either offered onsite, like in our building, or offsite in, in one of their locations. And that's taught by someone who's not a teacher.
So a student could leave with, or finish their sophomore year with six credits or junior year?
Senior year.
Senior year.
Senior year.
Yeah. That's us, from here. It's a simplified version, I guess. I could complicate it, but I won't.
This will be the first year that we test the transferability of those credits, then?
There is no test. They will transfer.
To...
Vermont State Colleges.
Okay, all right. UVM?
Vermont State Colleges.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't know, Neil, so...
No, I'm, that's, that's what I mean by the test, because they're finicky over there at UVM.
So, so I don't mean to like get into too much of it, but there are articulation agreements between Vermont State Colleges. So every Vermont State College that offers a, like, Statistics 101 class, that is universal throughout the Vermont State College system. So for example, a kid that takes Intro to Stats at VTC in Randolph, one that takes it at CCV Brattleboro, one that takes it at Johnson State, that's the, the same credit. And the intent behind that is to more easily do what you're talking about, to, to transfer that credit. And, and my other role as a husband, I mean, I'm, I'm talking from that role. So, so they've eased their articulation agreements to, to do just that, to make it easier for students to, to not lose in transfer.
Great.
Don't tell my wife. This is public meeting?
How many students are enrolled in these two classes?
Seven. There are other students in the classes that are not taking them for credit. They're not taking them for...
Not taking them for college.
There are seven that are taking it for credit, and there are others that are taking it on...
For simply high school credit. So the quid pro quo is that once you use your voucher for your junior year, you've used your voucher for your junior year. So kids have to be aware that if they, they do the embedded coursework, which, which makes sense for a lot of students who can't otherwise take advantage of the voucher, that they wouldn't be able to use it elsewhere. There are kind of other opportunities that I won't get into where they can take courses at reduced cost that are embedded, but that's a TBA kind of thing more so than anything Any other questions?
Do you think the requirements and, and the, the flavor of the PBGRs will ultimately be subsumed into the PLPs and the formats and requirements of those? I mean, what, what, how much do those inter-overlap and, you know, how much will the state's version of the PLP beat the individual, Nate, in the Vergens nature of the PBGRs?
We hope they work well together. I mean, the PLP work group at the state level is still alive, and so I've read that there is some chatter about having a, like, systematized version as to, like, the validity, the validity of that, I don't know. I would anticipate, and we anticipate based on Act 77, that, that there will be a strong correlation between those newly defined high school graduation requirements as, I think what Ed's going to get into, and what, and what we've articulated as our PBGRs, because it, just as a superficial way, and it'll probably steal Ed's thunder a little bit, they're moving away from the concept of the four credits of English into a more effective communicator type of aspect. So we feel, or I, I feel, I'll talk about myself in this, in this venue, I, I feel like we're on track to be successful. And I don't want to say we purposefully slow-played the PL, the personal learning plan aspect of it, but we knew that there was a work group working on it, so we didn't want to jump the gun, come up with this great idea for PLP and then have the state come down and say, well, you're doing it wrong. We're gonna, you're, you're gonna have to use this format. And they don't, it doesn't appear to me as though they are going to mandate something, but they could change their mind. They're the agency.
But I do think the, the fact that the, we received the personalized learning plan grant is that they're looking for input. So we're, I think, in a good space to be able to provide input so that we keep it personalized and not...
Because you're right ahead of it.
Class. I mean, I think we are, but just a little biased.
And the state, I mean, in, in a different capacity, I was able to serve on a New England Secondary School Committee that was looking at another kind of grant opportunity, and so I was the teacher rep, the Vermont teacher rep on that board. And as far as the New England Secondary Schools Consortium is concerned, which is where the League of Innovative Schools comes from, and just don't pay any attention to any of that, but there are, all the states in New England, except for Massachusetts, that are pursuing PLPs. And if you look at their website, they're using our state's website because David Roof, who is the, the chief, whatever his job title is, at the New England Secondary Schools Consortium, grant getter, has been fundamental in rewriting Act 77 as well as directing through either himself, Mark Costin, or someone else at the, at the New England region to kind of really use the Vermont model and the Vermont products. And so ultimately, I think what they anticipate, and they're very policy-driven, and we've tried to intimate that as a state, we are not particularly policy-driven, but I would anticipate that, that they desire to create policy at the board and state level to, to support this work in a very aggress, what they call an aggressive timeline, and we call the one that the state legislated, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What is capstone?
Oh, capstone...
I was trying to stay away from it. Ed, you speak.
Capstone is, is a culminating project that every eighth grade student has to complete successfully in order to step up as a ninth grader. And we, we built time in to, to help those students who may not be accomplishing that successfully. It, it's, it's also a, you know, it's a summative assessment, it's, it's measuring certain skills that we determine essential as to be successful in high school. A, a lot of what you see here in the, in the, the VUHS learning profile, effective communicators, researchers, able to, to evaluate information, able to speak comfortably in public about their topic. So that's all wrapped in. But it, it's also formative in, in that it, it's a learning process as we're going through. We're, we're very specifically teaching the skills through the process, and it's about a seven or eight-month process. So they're, they're working on research right now, there's a technology element, and it's very much sort of in motion and being developed, like they had, they, they piloted it last year. And we had all but six students successfully complete it at the end of the year. The other six finished it during the summer. And this year, you know, I, I expect that everyone will finish it successfully by the end of the year.
So your quiz for tonight.
What is this? What kind of stone is this? Anybody know?
Also a capstone.
A capstone. No, it's not. Anybody from Pennsylvania?
Keystone.
It's a keystone. So one of my pet peeves is you use a keystone for the capstone project icon. So you may want to change that.
Icon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your keystone was upside down, my friend.
It has to be rotation, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I thought it was a headstone.
Headstone?
Headstone? No, it's a keystone. But a capstone is a, a large, flat rock that you put on top of a wall to finish, to cap off the wall, like the projects that you're...
Take it up with the previous co-principal.
Yeah? Okay. The previous. Thank you. And then we changed the policy matters, the wellness policy to next, and... How are you?
Good. Good, good, good.
Did you introduce yourself?
Yes, so for those of you who don't know me, my name is Lynn Rappelford. I work here at the high school as a nutrition liaison, and I've been here for about the last three years. My main responsibilities are to help tapping... My main responsibilities are to help happy services and the school kind of be happy together, as well as composting and recycling initiatives here in the school. I also have a position with the district wellness, chairing that position for the last couple of years, and our responsibilities range in a number of different things. Just to pass out a few things here.
Thank you, Lynn. You're all good.
This first one that I'm handing out is a copy of those members on our wellness policy, or our wellness committee who have been working the last couple of years on looking at our current wellness policy and assessing that and our needs here at the school. So our committee members right now that have been working on this review of the policy ranges, we tried to have at least one representative from each school, and it's a range of anywhere from food service, nurses, principal, administrative, PE, guidance, it's kind of that all-encompassing wellness. It, little bit of background and history, the Child Nutrition and Reauthorization Act of 2004 required that all schools who participate in the lunch and breakfast program have a wellness policy. And I have a copy here of that, this is technically our current policy that was established way back then. It really only addresses nutrition, very minimal, nutrition guidelines, very minimal. And since then, we've had a lot of different laws and regulations and guidelines that have been passed at the state and federal level. So this again is our current policy. And then in 2010, the Healthy Hunger Free Act of 2010, that expanded the wellness policy requirements. On the back of that first page is a comparison of the 2004 and the 2010, different requirements that were needed in the wellness policy, or that are required in the wellness policy. Mainly, the difference between the two is it's really making sure that our wellness policy, for one, has a way for public input, whether it be staff, community members. It also, too, is promoting, getting that word out there of what our policy really is, and what it's all about, what our committee is supposed to be doing, and those things. So, that's a little comparison there. Really, our group has been, again, working for the last couple of years at looking at our policy. It really came down to an assessment of the school and what the schools are already doing, and us looking at the whole school environment, and really wanting to make a policy that stood strong with a comprehensive health outlook, so it looked also at counseling, it looked at, um, different things, let's see here. So not only nutrition services, but also physical education, nutrition education, and not just within the cafeteria, but in the classroom as well, counseling, social services, health and safe school environment, health promotion for staff, so lots of different areas that it had us really look and dive into. So, let's see here. Let me, I guess go ahead and, yeah, this is what we've come up with for the policy. Dun, dun, dun. And it's highlighted in different texts or different colors. For a reason, oh, good, okay. So you'll notice that there's blue text on here, and that's representing everything that's required of our wellness policy. So we, specifically, thanks to Wayne, went to the Vermont School Board Association website and pulled kind of their boilerplate plan of what they would want a wellness policy to include, and we just beefed that up a little bit. We looked at what our schools are already doing and what we would like to see in our schools, and that's represented in the black. So the blue, again, is using the Vermont School Board Association requirements, requirements that would come from the Child Nutrition Act, all of that, as well as kind of a little bit of our tweaking of the language. Again, the black is what we would also like to see, so it's a little bit of that extra. There's a few, two areas in here that are italicized, and those just represent a possible funding budgetary need, possibly in the future. For one, since I know budget is a big deal right now. On the second page, be physical education and activity, under number three, we're all doing, all the schools are doing what they should, and what they're required of, four minutes being seen by kids, but we would like to bump that up, and we would like to have our kids that much healthier. So if we were to work at that, that could be an area where it may need additional staffing, it may also, too, just be worked into what we currently have, it's all being looked at and what the school embraces later on. The group really felt also that for implementation, there really needed to be a person kind of overseeing all of that. We really like the idea of a wellness coordinator for our district, but again, that's looking at probably funding down the road. Right now, the little bit of time that's spent is grant-funded, and once that does run out, then the group will be looking at other areas to try and fund that if possible, as well as spreading out the wealth of work to those on the committee. So.
This is the first reading?
This is the first reading, and I would hope, yes, that everyone would be able to take a look at that and give input hopefully by next month, for a second reading and possibly.
So how should we submit recommendations or changes?
You want that coming directly to you?
Yeah, that would be great, yeah.
Is this documented online?
It is, it can be a Google Doc to.
Yeah.
For you to comment on, yeah, sure. And if you are interested, this is just the copy of the Vermont School Board Association, what they have also.
Which is everything in blue?
Which is pretty much everything in blue, yeah. So, I mean, to look at this, it's really embedded in there already, but if you do want a copy of that.
Lynn and I independently really picked apart this, the policy that you adopted in 2006 was the boilerplate from the VSBA, and they more recently came out with an updated version, and you can see just a degree of detail in the old policy, there's a couple legal references, and in this new proposed policy, there's much more extensive legal references. But anyway, as Lynn said, the blue text isn't necessarily verbatim on the VSBA site, but it very closely adheres to that. And then some recommendations in excess of the recommended language from the VSBA is in the black. So, and I really appreciate Lynn pointing out a couple of the things that have dollars associated with them, but there's lots of other things that impact program in a positive way that are also included in here. Lynn and her group have worked on this for a very long time, so, thank you.
If anyone wants to make any comments after you look it over, you can definitely email me at work, L.Rappaport, R-A-P-O-R-T, at Addison Northwest Supervisor Union. I appreciate any comments and insights.
Lynn, did you say there were two budget-related items in here, or one?
There is two that you could perceive as two, yes. One under physical education on that second.
But that one wasn't italicized, right?
It is, it's under number three, it's that second part, part of it's blue, and the second part.
The 225-minute part?
I think that was supposed to be.
This here, okay.
And then the last one is on the last page.
Right. Thanks.
Do you have a cost related to either of those?
No.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars, thirty thousand dollars?
No, I mean, right now, I mean, right now, the chair of this committee that is, you know, running the wellness part is, yeah, a couple thousand dollars is what is being budgeted, right, during the grant.
Yeah, for the coordinator, but for the PE, just as an example, elementary students might get eighty minutes a week of PE, so it's sort of doubling the PE costs for the elementary grades, sort of roughly.
High school is a hundred and fifty one week and a hundred the next week when they can be scheduled in the phys ed, so that's, it shows you the differential, to be able to cover that, you have to hire another phys ed teacher, that'd be seventy-five grand or better. So, and that's not the direction probably we're going.
Is there time in the schedule to accommodate three hours, forty-five minutes of physical education for a high school student?
It's definitely challenging right now, for sure, in a couple different ways. I think the good thing to come away with is, right now, we are meeting what we need to, you know, in that aspect. If it changes at all, if we, my fear would be is if, right now, we cut any position in PE, because it is, you know, right now, we are meeting it, if anything does change, Addison was questioned, you know, but they're still meeting, because it technically has to be two days a week, and, you know, that one position person is splitting that time, so they're not getting any less, even though there's less person, but it is something to think about, for sure.
Can you say in here where the transparency piece is?
What do you mean? Can you?
Well, one of the goals was to make it transparent to the public.
Mm-hmm, yes, 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 yes. So our goals that we have in mind right now is newsletters, the website, you know, getting the word out right now where it hasn't been really in the past, maybe some educational meetings, you know, to talk about it. It's a little dry, so I think we're more focusing on ways that the schools can, like one of them would be fundraising, or snacks in school. Those are the kinds of things that we would be more inclined to get out to the public of, you know, hey, bringing snacks to school today, here's some healthier options, you know, our wellness policy states this. It wouldn't necessarily be, you know, here's our lovely wellness policy, all six pages of it, you know, it'd be more of, yeah, that kind of tool and resources that I envision online, you know, having our wellness, a district wellness, you know, little, I'm so illiterate, you know, little thing where they can click on and then it comes down, you know, here's our policy, here's all the guidelines that you can follow, here's all the ideas, all the examples, yeah, more of something like that. And we're open to any other ideas and also get that out.
I just have one last question about that. I'm curious as to why we don't have a community member on the committee? Is that not something we would do normally?
No, we would. I think that, yes, that's a good question. We did have a couple of community members that were on, one was me, and then that role kind of changed, and we did have, yes, another parent, but then she got a full-time job. So, yes, absolutely.
You were that person for quite a while.
I was that person.
Before you became the wellness coordinator for the district.
Yeah, I try my hardest to get the word out to any community group, the high school here, the elementary schools, because that seems a really good place for that community, yeah.
So just so the board is aware, this process will be happening at each of the school board meetings this month as a first reading, and come to the board again in April for second reading and adoption. So the in-between, if you can get some input or questions to Lynn, and therefore the committee, that would be very helpful.
So you want feedback before the end of March, essentially?
Ideally, yeah, ideally, would be perfect, yeah. Thank you. Thanks for being my trial run.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, for those of you following along at home, we're now going to do public communication. Tim?
Good evening.
Howdy.
I have a couple of questions, since this is your board reorganization meeting, and your board that is together for their first time, the new board, is together for the first time, may I ask, who are the voting members? Would the voting members of the board raise their hands, please? Of the Board of Directors of Virginia Junior High School? Who votes?
Don't be all.
The student members don't vote?
No.
Okay, just.
And we are missing two tonight.
Okay, so there are six?
Seven.
Seven. So a quorum is?
Four.
Four, always.
With a mix.
Is that correct?
Yes.
That's my first question. The process that you use to appoint vacant seats, do you have a process?
Yes.
Is your board responsible for it, or is the select board in the community?
School. Yeah, the school board in the community.
And if there's no school board, then it's the select board.
Yeah. So Ferrisburg has been saying they're going to appoint one, and the select board's going to do it, and it's not the select board, it's, it can either.
It's you.
It's, no, it's the school board in Ferrisburg.
Oh, it's the.
It's the town.
School board.
Correct.
Yeah, so Waltham doesn't have a school board, so their select board would.
Okay, so I just wanted to get it straight.
Yep.
The other thing was, during the last couple of meetings that I've attended, one of the things that I look for is the treasurer. The treasurer isn't here, is she or is she? But at any rate, I suggested, and I looked at Vermont law, and it appears that it's something that you can do, that this board can appoint an assistant treasurer, so that when you have your annual meeting, or you have other meetings of importance to the public, that the assistant treasurer could answer questions. And as I understand it, the assistant treasurer can be a member of the staff and employee.
Yes.
So let me suggest again that before you leave tonight, that you appoint an assistant treasurer, because I voted for the board. And may I make another point? An educational point.
Yes.
Recently, at one of your meetings, we talked about public participation at board meetings, and the idea of having written questions and answers that you would provide, Mr. Chairman, to the board, and I looked up the Supervisory Union Policy, the Addison Northwest Supervisory Union Policy, Code C3, the title is Public Participation at Board Meetings, and I would hope that you would all go online and get a copy for yourselves, because it is the policy of the school boards, all of the boards of the Addison Northwest Supervisory Union, to encourage public participation at meetings. And it goes down to say the background, and how public participation is important, the implementation, and persons who may address the board, any resident, and school staff members, and so on, and then public comment on agenda items, specifically says, "The Chair will ask for comments on agenda items before action is taken by the board." So on each agenda item, as you, if you would like to interpret it that way, on each agenda item, as you go down, it would be your job to ask for public. on each agenda item, as you go down, it would be your job to ask for public comment.
I can, yes.
Okay. And that is, that's what's called the Public Participation Policy, adopted in 2007 by the Addison Northwest Supervisory Union.
So...
Thank you. That's your education for tonight.
Thank you very much.
I will come back again at future meetings and give you some other...
We'd love to have you.
But please do that. Please get yourself...
What I'd like to make sure that everyone does know, that when I asked for written communication, it was not written communication only. I asked people that, if I couldn't answer their questions to their satisfaction, would they please write down their questions, and I would be glad to answer them in public, in a public forum. So for those of you who don't read front page or front porch forum, there's been a lot of conversation about limitation of free speech or not being able to speak at these board meetings. And it's never my intention to limit anyone's speech or ability to communicate, but it is my responsibility to make sure that we run a meeting in a timely manner, and that's my intent. Yep.
Can I ask you where you found this?
On the Addison Northwest Supervisory Union page, web page, under policy. There's a whole bunch of policies in there.
Yeah, and each chair should have a policy manual for each board. And if the board would like, I could bring it to the board meetings if you'd like to use it. But there are policies in different levels of revision. Just before you start, I just want to make sure, Tim, we're all set.
For now.
Okay, thanks.
I can't think of anything else.
Cheryl?
No, this is just to add that there's also law, too, that I, during the board meeting, I opened session. And Secretary Condos, he's amazing, and I don't think he has ever not answered me within the same day that I asked a question. And so he's a great expert on open session meetings. But I do have three thoughts tonight. I'd like you to consider them before you put out another budget. And I share with you that I have a document that a year ago, that this board wasn't aware that we were in crisis. And in this document, it projects in March, the FY13 year-ending total. And in that total, you did include the fund balance that I've asked over and over again, why didn't the 693,000 fund balance, why didn't it make it to the FY actual? And I was told because the taxpayers benefited in the FY12. So I went back and I looked at FY12 actual, and the 693 revenue, balance forward revenue is not in the FY12 actual. But it did appear in the FY13 projection months before the year closed. But then in January, when the budgets came out, we were told that it wasn't, it didn't make it to the actual, which was sixty-seven percent of our million-dollar deficit. I'm almost on my knees, because if you don't change, I totally get it now. For years I didn't. I was trying to understand all this. If you don't change this accounting principle, you're going to send us into a deficit we're not going to be able to get back. For instance, if you look in the annual report, the, in the revenues, the first budget FY13, the 693,000 balance forward didn't make it to the FY13. Now, look at FY14. We have $150,000. If you carry on the same principle, that's not going to make it to the 14 actual. And then we're going to have $150,000 in deficit. People ask, what are your experts? If you go to Addison Central School Supervisory Union, their balance, their year-ending balance forward goes into a proposed year, and it always consistently, it ends up in that actual. It doesn't benefit the taxpayers in the prior year. I have a letter from former General Counsel of the Department of Education, Mark Godinger. And he said, in response to my question about how taxpayers receive the revenue of fund balances, he said, "Dear Ms. Hoffman, it's difficult to answer your question without full understanding of the underlying facts, and I agree with Secretary Condos that State Auditor Hoffer may be able to shed additional light on the general question. I see the surplus question as somewhat simplistic terms. If there is a surplus, it must be booked as a revenue for the following year, unless the electorate votes to put the surplus or a portion of it to another purpose. That said, I would speculate that an audited surplus could change," because that's what one of my questions was, "can an audited surplus change through the budgets?" It could change if it were to be discovered that the original figure was inaccurate. In addition, a school board or one or more members of the school board could express the opinion that a surplus or a portion of it be recommended to the electorate to be applied, contingent the necessary electorate vote to some other purpose. So for any fund balance to change, the electorate has to approve of it. And I would just beg you to give this immediate attention, because we're going to crash. I mean, right now, it's 700,000 FY14. If that balance forward doesn't get into the actual, which FY14 balance forward is FY12, right? And FY12 was included this year, right, to bring the million-dollar deficit to the 537, to bring it down. So it's already been spent, so I'm seeing that it's not going to be there in FY14. So that's it.
Okay. Kathy, do you have any comments?
No.
Thank you very much.
Well, I have three. The other ones are quicker.
Okay, before you go on, though, I'd like to see if there's anybody else who has comments tonight. And I just want to make sure how much time I have. Yeah? How quick? Okay, go ahead. Cheryl? Go ahead.
The other one is, as we move forward, you know, when we had our meeting, I was really overwhelmed. I would like to see our teachers not just give input or show up and be stressed out, but to collaborate with this board or with the committee. And, you know, I brought the eight characteristics to success that the Department of Ed did a few years back. And collaboration with teachers is one of the eight necessary pieces for a successful school. So I'm really hoping this time, you know, that there's just really a unity. There's going to be some tough discussions. And then the other one is, I want you to make sure that this is a lawful vote. You know, I've questioned, because there's a law that... Twenty-four Vermont statute 1523. It reads, "When a school district at the end of the fiscal year, contemplated by Section 1683 of this title, has a deficit, unless the voters have voted to borrow funds to repay the deficit over a term of three years or less, or unless a deficit has been refunded pursuant to Chapter 53 of this title, the school board shall add an amount sufficient to pay the deficit in its next adopted budget and report the total to the Commissioner of Education for purposes of calculating education spending." Now, I know that you sent me a letter from a lawyer, but I also know that Secretary Condos and Bill Talbot, in a public setting, they said, Bill Talbot said, "Districts are expected to comply with 24 BSA 1523B." And Jim Condos said, "Carol, school statutes are not an area of strength overall for us." Having said that, 24 BSA 1523 has not been repealed, and it is still a valid statute. You know, I'm not even disagreeing with the action, just that we're in a public setting, and there's laws, and the voters need to be protected, you know. If they have this protection, that they get to decide if it's going to be a loan or not. We need to be transparent with them, and because they are friends, and so, that's it.
Thank you very much. Christina?
Just a couple things. I wanted to say thank you to all of you for crafting the budget that got voted down. I personally really appreciated the least amount of impact to staff and students, even though there were no textbooks to be placed, but, thank you. And I hope that it continues in that direction somewhat. And then I just had a question about the superintendent candidate and whether or not a contract had been signed yet for that.
It has not.
Thank you for the thank you, though.
Yeah. Great. Hi.
Hi. Christopher Sheehan, Virginia High School.
Hi, Chris.
As you're contemplating the budget, I just had a couple of thoughts as I was trying to keep up on the latest. You know, news is coming in from all over as fast as we can read it. Just so the board is aware and everybody's aware, you know, I've been trying to think about, if I were a board member, what would I try to do with the next budget? That, you know, this is the first time it's been defeated in years and years. And, you know, the budgets were defeated in 35 communities around our state. And I think that means it's a message to Montpelier. And Neil's FAQ, for the first time, gave me some clarity on why this increase was so impactful on the community, even though it's only a 2.9% increase in a budget, which is modest. And it's the seven cent increase proposed by Montpelier. So earlier today, Governor, or Governor Shumlin, in a statement, said, "No one wants to see a seven cent increase." So Montpelier has heard the message from all of these communities. So I suggest letting the state take the first shot at fixing this problem, since it's probably the state that created the problem in the first place. So before we overreact, thinking that the community is down on your approach to education and keeping all of these people, all of these professionals in the school and keeping our programming where it's at, let's not view it necessarily as disagreeing with that, instead disagreeing with Montpelier. Give government, the governor, a chance to fix it, and then we'll hopefully keep the programming we have. Because I don't think this community, this community's shown over and over again, it's pro-education, it's pro-programming, it's supported these schools. So let them continue to do that and not react to the message meant for somebody else. Thanks.
Thanks. Just a note, although Neil was the person who put all the FAQs, all of the board members contributed to that.
I just want to thank Neil.
Yes.
No, yeah, absolutely. Thanks a lot.
I did write the first draft.
Thanks, Chris.
Really thank Kathy for that.
Just so everybody knows, we had an excellent couple of hours today at the invite of the Addison County Superintendents. We had all of the chairs of every board in Addison County, I think every board was there. All of our representatives in Montpelier were there from all over Addison County. And all the superintendents, I think those were the three parties, and had some pretty open discussion for a couple of hours about, you know, what's broken, what can be fixed, what do we do, how do we do it, what's important, those types of things. No action was taken. I think that the idea was to get everybody in the same room. That's the first step. The second step, I think, you know, I don't know if every county or region is doing this, but, you know, I'd like to thank you for putting it together. I don't know who had the impetus, but it was nice to know that people were listening, so. So we are trying to collaborate with Montpelier and not take action that may not be necessary. Anything else?
I just wanted to add.
Yep. Hi.
Mark Powers, I teach science here.
Hi, Mark.
It's time for us to all sit together at a table and discuss what's going on with our budget and the programs that we have here. We've worked really long and hard to make excellent programs happen here. Montpelier is creating an issue. We have our own issues, but we can't just scuttle everything we have when a big number comes back at us and says, "You've got to cut again." We've already cut 100,000, 550,000, 120, 65. There's a point in time when we're not going to make much of a difference to that 2.4% of the big pie, but it's going to devastate what we do here. There's a point in time when we have to talk about, we all see this thing through different lenses, and I think it's time for us to all sit together and we have a discussion about this, so we feel like we're part of it, and then we can make the best decision for the students here. Thank you.
That's an excellent segue into the next item. You know, we moved the discussion items up into the next part of the agenda. A lot of us have talked to a lot of people. I think everyone is aware of what's going on. Our plan is to spend the next 30 minutes or so talking about observations, suggestions, you know, any kind of discussion that you'd like to have, and then take some time to plan some next steps. We're not going to have a, you know, in order, like Chris was saying, you know, not to overreact. I think it's a time to talk, but I think we need to set some special meetings just for budget discussions, because 30 minutes isn't going to be enough, so. But I would like to spend, or the board would like to spend the next 30 minutes talking about observations, town meeting day reflections, and discuss what the next steps are going to be. Some people have asked me what we're going to do, and my answer consistently has been, "We don't know." And because we don't want to overreact, we don't want to march down a path that we can't come back from. So one of the things that, that, and I'm just giving my impression, anybody can go after me, but... can go after me, but, um, one of the things that, that I, people have asked me also is, uh, or commented to me also is, you know, I've never voted against a, a budget, um, but I, I, I feel like I have to this time. And I've never heard that from some of these people before. So, that's where we start. We are where we are. I think there, there is a, a path to success, um, but life is full of compromises. Sometimes you have to, uh, think about what's best for the community, uh, as a whole. School is a, uh, of, the educational community is a very important part of the community, but it's not the only part of the community, so. Open it up to comments. Hi. Yep. I saw you first.
I, I know that there are certain deadlines. I mean, if you don't pass a budget by a certain date or something, that things catch in, kick in, but I would, I don't know, could we have a review of what that process is?
As far as I understand, I just got my twenty-thirteen edition today, so I haven't read it all. But as far as I understand it, we haven't, if we don't, uh, put a budget or get a budget approved by June thirtieth, right? Then we, uh, there's a certain percentage, the last time I looked at it was eighty-seven percent of the prior year's budget could be spent, um, in the ensuing months or borrowed and spent.
Eighty percent.
Eighty.
Yeah, okay. So I, I looked at two thousand and eleven until I got this one.
So it's June thirtieth?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, we don't intend to go that way. It doesn't make sense. We've got a lot going on. There's, uh, there's a lot of financial things, there's a lot of educational things, there's, uh, we certainly want to get to a, a good place, uh, and a thoughtful place, uh, and give people the opportunity to contribute to that place. And then, uh, it's a relatively short period of time that, um, we have after that to have a vote. I think it's like five or seven days after that. Hi, Dave.
Dave Patlock, sheriff. I just happened to read today, I was reading on the subject, and the Walden Vermont School District, um, passed their budget in December on the sixth vote, um, trying since town meeting day. So at June thirtieth, they went to the eighty percent.
Right.
They, they kept voting until they finally got a budget that passed. So at some point in February, the money would've run out, but once June thirtieth happens, you're not locked into that, but you get to keep voting. But six was, six was the record and it went till December, so.
There's hope, yeah. We'll do better.
Kirk.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah. I mean, and there's gotta be so many days between each vote, too.
No.
It's actually quick, though. We don't have to. Yeah.
I think it's like five or seven days.
You have to get it warned, right?
Yeah.
Warn it.
Warning is, is five days.
Yes.
So it's, it's not like the thirty days that we have to wait for other things. Neil, you're next, and then Christine.
Thank you, Kirk. Um, done a lot of dialogue out in the community and just to be upfront, I think part of our difficulty has to do with our approach to communicating the financials in a particularly complex year, compounded by, you know, the tax rate issues. The unfortunate bit is even if the governor works some magic, those are the words I heard him use on, on BPR tonight, um, or puts a shifty over to the non-residential tax rate, which has owned not only out-of-state people, those are people that own land in another town, um, it's still not gonna come to a magic solution. The proportion of the seven percent, or the seven cent increase, uh, translated into about fifty percent, a little bit less, of our tax rate increase. And the remainder sits either with the local spending or with our deficit situation, which is particularly difficult. So we do have to approach it sanely and hope that we can get some, some reprieve, um, from the state funding system, but we also have to, you know, move forward. I was really hopeful that we would have our budget pass to allow us to initiate sort of a sane conversation, exactly what you're talking about, Mark, um, around how do we approach next year, knowing that we're looking at a deficit again next year? Our hand is forced because we have to come up with a budget now for this year. We don't have the luxury of as much time as I would've, um, hoped we would have. So that said, I'm gonna actually come right back to you if I could, and what would it look like to get that kind of, sort of, you know, faculty, board, workshop input? Because, and the reason I, I'm putting this out to you is, the two big budget meetings that we had were the biggest meetings that I'd ever seen play out in my eleven-year school board career. And it would be really hard in that kind of atmosphere to make some forward progress. So what, what are you seeing as a process by which we could actually get some forward progress, approach some of the, you know, the compromise that we're gonna have to do and do it in a sane manner?
I would think that you could say to, you know, first identify all the various stakeholders that are involved with it and say, all right, X amount of people from those stakeholder groups, we, that sit down, kick some ideas around, back and forth with their other people in their group, start hammering out some details, thinking outside the box and doing things of that nature. You could probably start it tomorrow if you wanted to, because people care a lot about what's going on and we're all, we're all very concerned about it.
Sure.
As I'm sure you are, so. So find some tables and, you know, I wouldn't think it would take too long to get thoughtful people together, to put, you know, maybe preface it by putting out some information, like, you know, if your thing did a lot to explain to me exactly some of the realities. And again, I don't know if everything that you want to consider, but obviously tomorrow is too quickly, too quick, but within a very short period of time, one committee that could work on something, I don't know what the actual timeline would be, you know, Neil. What are my suggestions?
I would, it's back to what you guys were trying to say, looking to do it in April, though, or in May, but I'm just curious, like, how much time?
Yeah, I really don't.
Don't know.
I don't know. I wanted to have this conversation first before we decided how quickly or how slow. Jeff asked me to read this, uh, and I'm, I'm taking it, um, I'm, I'm taking one paragraph out of something that he wrote. He could not be here tonight because of another meeting. He had hoped to be here to, to speak to this, but, um, Jeff said, "Speaking for myself, I'm not interested in going back out until we have a twenty-thirteen audit in hand, a treasurer's report, a cogent explanation of the cause of the twenty-thirteen deficit, a portion of which was provided, but not to the board or the public that turned out in force for our meetings. And an appropriate explanation of the substantial unbudgeted special education costs incurred and a plan to control them going forward, and, uh, uh, a fiscal year twenty-fifteen budget that retires the twenty-thirteen deficit in full." That's what Jeff would like to see.
So.
Yeah.
One of, one of the things that I had hoped to be working on this summer was about the special education piece, which Jeff brought up. And I think it would be really useful to get some input from you all, the faculty and the administration, on some proposals for how to deal with special ed in alternative ways to the way we're doing it. You know, sort of like an alternatives analysis where the current way that we're doing it and the current sort of approach to outplacements where we have to, um, is one model, but there may be others that we could just examine with a consistent set of criteria or pluses and minuses or pros and cons, so that we can, the board can have an opportunity to look at other models and see if there's a way to get some cost savings. That's something that I wanted to see if we could ask for.
We're underway. Kara Griswold is doing a cost-benefit analysis of, for instance, having a, a homecoming program, uh, downstairs for some of the outplaced kids. And the cost-benefit analysis is, is, you know, how many teachers do we have to hire? How many aides do we have to hire? How many?
How much space do we have to find?
Yeah. Do we have to build space? Do we have to make use of other space? And so Kara's working pretty hard at that and looking pretty hard at that, at, in her halftime role, but that's because she's the high school person, that's what she's looking at more than anything. So I'd, I'd say Kara makes the most sense when I speak to her about, about the budget issues with special ed. She's got, she's got the information at her fingertips and she can, she'll be a great help to the board and to superintendent, so.
Is Ed, is she benefiting from perhaps insight from other members of the faculty who may, you know, have some things to offer?
I think so for sure. It's a pretty, it's a pretty, um, ripe topic.
Oh, I bet.
So, yeah.
Do you have a timeline here?
Not, not per se, I don't think. It's, uh, I think she's, she's looking around at different other, uh, internal programming, uh, options. Some of them aren't good, some of them are warehousing kids, and, uh...
It's not least restrictive environment.
And it's not least restrictive environment, so that's what, you know, they've, they've gotta follow those laws. And so every time she finds an efficiency, she's gotta double-check to see if there are unintended consequences about the placement. And, uh, and she's pretty good at it. She's a young educator, but she's really very knowledgeable and I think, uh, given an opportunity to make a, uh, some kind of a, a direct explanation to either panel or the board itself, would, I, I would recommend it. She's pretty good.
Carol?
One thing, I, I got a document from the Department of Ed, um, and they gave me the trends of special ed for the high school. And definitely, I mean, from two thousand and eight, it was one million four hundred and thousand, and then it goes up to FY thirteen, two million, um, two-hundred-and-eight-five-thousand. But what I, but what I looked at and what was concerning was the poor projection in the, within the proposed budget. So we weren't charging our taxpayers enough. And I know that's not popular, but, but we weren't in special education, so then we were facing a des- deficit, um, in, in the actual. And, um, so I think it's really important, um, to make sure that, um, what we're proposing isn't going to, you know, really hurt our actual, our actual budget. And I know that, um, Bill Talbot from the Department of Ed, um, he said the common practice is to propose the year before, you know, and that would've, you know, that if we would've done that, um, yeah. So that's something you guys might wanna consider.
Can I come?
Yeah, of course.
Um, you know, I, I, we're, we're proposing these budgets before some students who require special ed are even, have even moved to our district, or sometimes their needs become apparent at the transition between elementary school and middle school. So when we're proposing those costs, we don't have a true and accurate picture of the needs of the population that we're required to serve. So we can't predict that we're going to find the least restrictive environment for the needs of a particular student happen to be in a school that's not in this district or that we aren't able to serve that student here. And we incur, you know, a hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars a year in tuition for that particular student, and that student wasn't even on, on our horizon at that time. So it's very difficult to predict those costs.
Right. Well, I think what I was saying is, is just, um, for instance, um, FY, FY twelve came in at over two million. But the FY twelve proposed, from what Bill Talbot was saying, well, you throw out the two million again, and then, then you might actually have a surplus when the actual comes in. But our FY twelve was only one million six hundred thousand. So that, that's just what I was saying.
So you realize you're talking twenty percent of the school budget at that point, right? Two million dollars out of ten million dollars, that's twenty percent in the special education component. And I wonder what the community might think about that. And that's why I think it's so important to have a conversation about what the alternative approaches are to meeting with the least restrictive, um, environment.
Yeah. Carol's right, we, you know, we under-projected for sure. I mean, there's no doubt. It's so hard to project. And now that we're here with the public and we'd, we'd love to explain to Carol and to the board and to everybody exactly what's going on and exactly what the cost drivers are, we can't because of FERPA. We can't, we can't mention a kid in identifiable terms in any manner, shape, or form. So we're sort of sitting on our hands and asking you to, uh, trust the process a little bit, and we're trying to get the process better. And, you know, Beth is a, is a special educator and, and she sees the same things we do. And, uh, I think we can make the system better, but on the other hand, we can't tell you exactly what's going on because we'd be violating somebody's, uh, legal rights, so. Just wanted to make that point.
Yep.
I just wanna say that I think it would pay for the board to take their time in putting a lot of thought and bringing other people into the discussion of, on the budget before you bring it to the voters, because I think if you bring a hastily budget, it's not gonna go, it's not gonna pass again. And you also, and I, not take, not, in the paper, it was quoted that we have too many teachers for the students that we have, that's been put out there in the public. And that factor needs to be put into the equation of, of the budget issues.
So, Ed, to your point about identifiable information, I think this gets a little bit to some of the transparency that the board has not been able to reveal. And so obviously, we can't know junior A and missy B and where they, you know, but we have X children being outplaced to facility whatever at a cost of four-hundred thousand dollars. We have three children needing service B, being outplaced to facility X at a cost of sixty thousand dollars. If we could at least see the accounting in those blanket unidentifiable terms, it would allow me, when I'm in the, uh, when I'm in front of town meeting, frankly, to say, "Yeah, we can't talk about who, we can't talk about where, but it's real."
I think there was a document prepared for the board that did that.
Very recently.
Yes.
Very recently, right.
If there, that information is there, it takes a little while to exise some of the identifiable, sometimes your.
And that was a.
Identifiable traits or something you're not, that's not obvious.
That was a good document, but it came after the budget meeting, it came after the big honkers that we had, you know, the hundred-and-fifty people in this room meetings. So, you know, in, in out years, it'll be helpful.
Let's see, who's next? I didn't, I, I'm sorry, I was looking down, so I'm gonna just take in order.
Well, I was just gonna comment on what Neil, you just asked for. The only problem with that is we live in such a small community that sometimes if we say one student is at X, everyone knows, and then you've just violated FERPA. And so that's, I think, we're part of the.
So we gotta think outside the box around that, because we need the tools to support our school. I need the tools to argue why.
And you don't have, you don't have to name the placement. You can say, um, one student at X, which costs this. Two students at placement Y, that costs this. You don't have to identify any of that.
Yeah. I'm just trying to find the information to help me sell.
Okay, Carol was next, and then Tim, and then Dave.
Well, I, I just didn't want people to think that our taxpayers are, are paying two million, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. That's, that was the eligible cost for FY thirteen. You have a mainstream block grant, you have special education, and you, and you also, this was new to me, you also have extraordinary reimbursements. So, so I was told it's about forty, sixty. The state kicks in sixty, the taxpayer's forty. So FY thirteen, the state paid one million four hundred thousand, and the, our taxpayers paid, um, eight-hundred-and-seventy thousand. So I think that's important for everybody, you know. I think Kara pulled two million.
I don't know how to verify without Kathy here. Tim?
I have a series of comments. I'll comment.
I have a series of comments. I'll comment. Carol just said, Pogo said, we have met the enemy and he is us. The state and then the taxpayer? The state and the taxpayer are the same the same person. That's my first comment. Ed, I'll trade you HIPAA for your rules, Andy Dan.
We understand, we understand.
My third thing was that at our legislative breakfast this morning, the topic was education. For an hour and a half, I didn't get to ask questions because I had to emcee it this morning, so they kept me quiet by doing that. But it was very clear by our legislators that supervisory union budgets are not controlled by the high school. This board has no control over our supervisory union budgets. And second to that, that is, am I correct in saying that the special education budget is now the supervisory union? So you don't have any control over it?
Not necessarily.
We're representative on the Addison Northwest, so we do have three representatives that are on that board. So we do represent the high school.
Okay.
But we we don't control the board.
Okay, well, push.
But yeah, there's, I mean, one of the other things that that we need to keep in mind is is we we spread a lot of the the changes in the cost this year so that it wouldn't affect the elementary schools as severely as it did in some other supervisory unions. I mean, there were some very small schools that had very big bills this year. But, you know, again, it still has to be paid for by someone.
And my third and last comment
It's usually Pogo.
Of the evening, yes. My my other comment is that it's not so much the audit that we we'd like to see, we really all would like to see the audit. But it's the management letter that goes with that.
Yeah.
We we really think that that analysis, that overall overarching analysis, the management letter, the one that you guys take a look at and make choices on it. And you're able to then extrapolate whether the figures that you have in front of you are, how accurate they are as to the management letter's explanation of how those are put together is very, very important. I don't know how you will set up the next vote without having that. About twenty percent, I think, of the folks who voted no on the budget voted no because of the lack of an audit.
Well, we would have
And then whatever they're understanding about it, I don't know. But that's what they that's what they're saying right now is they voted no because of that. So before you move forward
That's important information.
Let's all sit down with the auditors. If I mean, if they'll come, some citizens I know would be willing to fund getting them here to sit down across the table if that's what it takes. It'd be very embarrassing for them to have to be funded to come down and talk to their customer, but we can do it.
I have a question.
I think you're next.
Does anyone know why we don't have an audit at financial statement?
Again, I don't.
You don't? Does Kathy know?
I believe Kathy knows their, you know, when they they schedule the audit. And they have been in, they they have shown her preliminary findings, it just hasn't been formalized.
The fieldwork was completed in November, correct? Is that what we learned? That's when they started fieldwork? You would know you were in there. But the fieldwork's been completed.
And and again, this is all hearsay, but there are a limited number of auditing firms. And a larger number of, don't get, don't let Dave get going. I have two comments behind now, so I have one on that as long as I talk about auditing. My understanding is
Did that answer your question?
Well, no.
It's not ready yet, that's the answer.
I think I can answer, Laurie, because I think what happens is the accounting firms do this kind of work in the fall. Then they run into tax season and they don't have any time to finish it up.
Right, exactly.
After tax season, then they come back to them. So I don't think you see a lot of these kind of audits being released in January, February, March.
So do you think this is common all over Vermont?
Yes.
I don't know.
It was in my previous district.
Legislative breakfast and the answer is no. This is the only district affected. In fact, they pretty much shut me down the first time I asked the question four or five weeks ago. They said, that's only for Janes. That was their answer.
Those are legislators.
Whether that's correct or not, I have no idea, but that was their answer.
Well, Stephanie just said that
In my previous district, there's a very big lag in when the audit is done and and
By big lag, are you talking eight months?
It's hard to, it it's months, it's
Well, months makes sense to me, but eight months
I want to, I got one more thing. I just want to get back to the special ed thing, just follow up on Neil's point. I I agree with what you're saying. It's a big number, it's a big percentage of the budget, and we view the board and we, public, need to understand it. And we'd be very, I I would personally be satisfied just with hypothetical information, just so I can understand. I don't I don't want anybody's personal information, but a person with such and such situation would would be handled in this way. Just just hypothetical, it would be useful. Okay, hi Carol.
Hi.
And then Christina.
I'm I'm asked over and over again because there's a there's a place in the audit that says difficulties encountered in performing the audit. And I've heard every reason except what they consistently put in the audit for years. This is for FY twelve, and it says, the completion of our audit was delayed due to being unable unable to audit amounts due to and from the supervisory union until the supervisory union's trial balance was made available. I have no idea what that means, but but it's not, I mean, that's why I would love more of audit conversation at the board level so that we could understand this. But but from what I understand, they have these drafts that go back and forth. So my question is, if it's because of taxes, if it's because there's not enough auditors, why isn't it in the audit?
I was just wondering, is the district office hires the auditors, is that how it works or?
The supervisory, the the supervisory union hires the auditors.
The whole district?
I believe that's how it works, yeah.
And then it's
So it's always confusing to me. It the there are many districts within a supervisory union district. They should drop the district, but it's, you know, the supervisory union district, in this case, makes up six, has six districts in it. So just wanted to be clear.
And then Kathy's working directly with the auditor and then Tom, do you, are you involved in that?
Not as much as Kathy.
Okay.
Yep.
So but you're the her the oversight of the whole process?
Yep.
Okay, just curious.
I have a question. May I?
Of course.
Thank you. Do you know why the trial balance wasn't available?
What I know is that there's a lot of work that goes into it, Laurie, and
Of course.
Yeah.
I mean, I totally get that.
Okay, and so we have three people who try and provide that information to the auditors. And and it's not always information that's immediately on hand.
Are we, do we lack staff?
That would be part of it.
That would be my impression.
Then that should be standard in the audit. And it would be good information for us if the auditors and them agreed that, you know, you didn't have enough staff.
Is that the highest priority?
Position, yeah.
Because of the difficulties encountered in performing the audit.
Right, no, I understand. They're not going to make recommendations, that's what I'm saying. They're just going to state the facts. If we asked them to make recommendations, maybe they would.
Actually, yeah. When you get all four reports, you'll see that they make recommendations.
Anything else? Do you have more on the agenda?
We're actually a minute early, so.
I was really hoping that we could get to the student reps
Yeah.
real quick, because I'm looking at them and they're fading fast and probably have a lot of homework.
Ah, no way. You've already done your homework, right?
Of course. I don't really have much of a chance to, actually.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we'll put the student representatives last.
Yes, sir?
Sure. Hi. So sports are kind of in a lull right now at BOHS. We're between seasons. There were some championships that happened recently, though. The hockey team was runner up in the state championship. And there was the wrestling championships as well, but I don't know all the details of who won what weight class. So I won't go into too much detail there, but I'm sure the details are available. But spring sports What's that?
Pierceall?
Oh, it's one sixty.
One sixty.
Yeah.
One sixty and one twenty-five was third. They both went to New England's, and we placed sixth in all, so pretty good. And his little brother was JV state champion, so there.
Nice job, Jeff.
And we had a champion long jumper, too.
And then spring sports will be starting up next week, right? Is it next week or the week after?
Yeah, next or the week after, yes.
As far as music goes, the Commodore Jazz Ensemble is performing at the Flynn tomorrow. It's a Flynn Jazz Festival, like all the schools, all of Vermont really are coming and playing at the Flynn. So that should be fun. I'll be doing that. And then, you want to talk about other band stuff?
Yeah, along with or on the music note, the chorus has a concert tomorrow, which includes the high school, middle school, and the Commodore Singers in that, which will be good. All of the music departments have been working their butts off on all their music. And the band concert is next Wednesday, which includes the high school, middle school, jazz band, and jazz jammers. And lastly, NHS has been working on getting or participating in the Relay for Life in April? Or no, it's June, yeah, in the middle of June, and is also working on collecting cleats and soccer equipment for kids in Africa, which we are just getting started.
That's the National Honor Society.
Yes, sorry.
In addition, let's see. So in my AP Euro class recently, some people came in and talked to us about upcoming community visit in Virgens. And I sent out an email to the whole student body, I think. It probably went to you as well. So if you if anyone's interested, you can just email me and I can forward that to you. But on Tuesday, March eighteenth, there's going to be a Virgens community visit. There's going to be a series of forums for community members, including students, to meet and exchange ideas about how to improve our city here in Virgens in the school. And I basically sent out an email inviting any students to attend, kind of encouraging student voice. And, yeah, there's a flyer that I sent in the email as well. I wish I had it here, but, again, I can forward that to if you need it. And there's going to be a dinner put on by Three Squares, I was told, so it's kind of another incentive to come. Yeah, if anyone wants any more details, I can forward that to you. And I think that's all we have.
I have one question. What instrument do you play? You said you were participating in
Oh, yeah. I'm a percussionist, so I play drums and all the percussion stuff.
Nice.
You haven't seen it?
Come to the concert next Wednesday. It'll be fun.
I would say it's up to you if you want to stick around, if you guys get it.
I I should probably head out. Thank you for awareness, though.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And to you guys, the Commodore Parent Teacher Group is, our scrimmage sale is coming up on April fifth. It's our big one fundraiser of the year. And last year, I think we raised around fifty-two hundred dollars, so we're hoping to beat that this year. And anyway, you guys are all invited to come shop and we're accepting donations every Saturday at Kennedy Park from nine to ten, through March, and then the sales. And we're going to be moving everything over. And then I also wanted to mention Hannah Hatch won a big award this past week, and you may have to help me with the U S A.
Or sorry, you told me.
Thank you, yes.
I was the judge. I was one of them. I shouldn't say the. It was very exciting. I'm sorry, I jumped in.
No, no, that's good. You know more about it, but she's going to be competing in Indian Athletics, is it?
Yes, she's 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 going on the nationals. And Diane Lamper, House Rep, I was asked to participate in it. Carleen Devine from Ferrisburg was 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 in charge of this at a statewide level. And I'd asked if I would be willing to help out, and of course, I said yes. So we got there. The students did not say their names or where they were from. It was a very, very structured piece. I did not know who it was until the end, until she won. And that was amazing because I haven't seen her for a little while, and I know her parents and both of her grandmothers. So it was a very exciting event.
Hannah's a junior.
Thank you.
Principals.
I think Well, I just wanted to, I I was reminded that there's a conflict tomorrow because it's a choral concert, but the district administrators have all been meeting throughout the year in a public safety meetings and crisis reexamining our crisis response procedures, aligning them schoolwide. The all the administrators are going, a lot of the first responders, we've got a representation from the area sheriffs and the police department and the state police. It's been well attended, and that meeting is also happening tomorrow. And it's at the, I don't know, the Christian school. So we and because they're involved in our district as well, so they've been there. And, you know, it's it's sort of helpful to think that if we align our our procedures and our announcements and our, you know, all calls when we have one of those in the elementary school, then the students know what to expect when they come to we don't have to reteach them at the high school, so a drill is is a drill and the procedures are the same. So that's been helpful to think about it from that term. It's a continuation of just keeping our kids safe. But also making the right information available to the people who would most likely be the first responders. We're doing a lot of tabletop exercises, you know, what would happen if there was a hazardous waste spill at the corner right by the Addison School? And, you know, what that might do or on, you know, in Ferrisburg or something, and what would we need to do and know and who to call? And and who, what's the chain of command in those events? So we have another one tomorrow, but it will conflict with the choral concert.
I recently got a bill for a rescue response. Luckily, we had paid the fifty dollars, but it would have been almost a thousand dollars for one response. Do you have anything, Ed?
Yes, I do. I have three things. One is that we got the YRBS Youth Risk Behavior Survey results back. And we have found over the last number of years that kids self-report pretty accurately, as long as it's anonymous. And we're pleased to announce that Virgens looks pretty good, only in comparison with the other high schools in the state. But we've got the lowest number for trying marijuana, the lowest number for use. Lowest, by far the lowest number with prescription pain relievers. The lowest in cocaine, couldn't get any data on heroin. Drastically lower on offered, sold, or given drugs on school property the past twelve months. Tied for lowest in drank alcohol in the past thirty days. We don't binge drink a lot, it seems. We do drive six percent of the time, seems, with people who have been drinking. Everybody texts texts about the same. We seem to be a little bit more virginal than other schools. And and the rate seems considerably lower. And not many of our kids get tested for HIV. Our kids practice safe sex when they practice it. Eighty-six percent of our kids tied with Middlebury say that they probably or definitely complete a post-high school program. And that's that's higher than the than the administration's aspiration rates, so that's pretty impressive. And we're growing in that direction. They also are very strong and teachers care about them and give them lots of encouragement. So we had we had a really strong score in that. They feel like they matter to the people in their community. And a very strong, students help decide what goes on in your school response. So, you know, a lot of the, a lot of our efforts, a lot of our energy, that's unseen in test scores and everything like that, goes into our PBIS work, our goes into our PBIS work, our pro-social work here at the school. This is a very sa, I believe we have a very safe learning environment, you know? I can't, that was eight years ago, I broke up my last fight. I mean, you know, the kids are really great around here, and they're very directed toward success. So I just thought I'd share that with the board and with any public that's here. Make a short report on the building, because I'm on the building oversight on the building committee. It looks as if we're going to be opening the auditorium by October. It's going to be a very functional facility, if I believe the engineers, and I have no reason not to. But we're going to have a new HVAC, we're going to have new lighting. We're going to tear out the ceiling, paint it all flat black, have the duck work up there painted black under the, under the LED lights, so you're not going to see anything above them. The kitchens, they've got most of the planning done for the kitchen. The bleachers are going to go in in good shape, what am I forgetting? So they've been working very hard at this.
Those going in, the, those bleachers?
Yes.
Small school, those would be going in any time, right?
We thought so, but the bids haven't even gone out yet, so. But they're going out, and that's going to be a fairly, and they're also going to put side baskets on new hardware as well. So these guys have been working really hard. I'm always amazed at how many of these well-paid engineers show up for these things. And last, I was going to go over Act 77, because sometimes I think we forget about what these things cost us. I don't know, I'm not trying to look at this.
Kurt, can you help him out?
Up to top view.
But it's got a, it's got a yellow memo there, I can't read it.
All right, so this is just about Vermont Educational Missions in general, more than Act 77. But I subtitled it Cost Drivers and Underfunded Mandates, because they're not unfunded mandates, but they certainly are underfunded mandates. And one of the reasons I'm doing this is I'm a little upset when our governor came out and said, you know, congratulated the people who defeated the school budgets, when in fact it was, he was eminently responsible for the 7%, all right? I felt that that was a little bit hypocritical. So I went and looked at some of the, especially Act 77, and how it affects what we're doing. We are out ahead of Act 77. We're out ahead of personalized learning plans, flexible, you know, programming and things like that. We're way out ahead, and yet the governor came out in favor of it. Okay, so Vermont Educational Funding, understand we don't, for sure. Act 77 is to encourage flexible pathways to secondary education, to encourage creativity, that's us, to promote post-secondary readiness, that's us, and to increase the rate of high school completion. We're at 97%, not bad. Got some pretty amazing teachers. Flexibility, we need flexibility to achieve a quality 21st century education. Nobody's laughing at my illustrations. I look so hard for these. Personalized learning plans are part of Act 77. And it's just, if you're going to warehouse children, put, and I taught in warehouse industrial-type schools in Kansas City, and, you know, you've got 35 kids in a class, you've got a canned curriculum, you've got one, you know, textbook, you can educate kids pretty cheaply. But you individualize education, which is what the governor wants us to do, you need a lot of face time with kids to be a mentor, to be an advisor. You spend a lot of face time with kids, and our, our teachers have been willing to make that, that transformation from, you know, the expert in earth science to just I'm taking care of my kids, and I'll teach them earth science on the way. So by November 30th, 2015, a school district shall ensure the development of personalized learning plans for each student in grades nine and 10, any 11th or 12th grade student who wishes to enroll in the dual enrollment program. And by November 30th, and I messed that up, that's the next year, will not only create, 2016, will not only create PLPs for 7th and 9th graders, but maintain and change all existing PLPs. So it's going to be a geometric progression for the first three years, until everybody's got a working PLP from 7th through 12th. That's going to take a lot of time, if we do it right, we care about our kids.
Okay, that one's good.
All right, who'll do this? Who has the time? Luckily, our advisory program and PBGRs have positions for you as favorably in regard to personalized learning plans, but we still need enough teachers and enough flexibility to make sure they're done right. You know, there's, it's called contract straitjacking and strait jacketing, which occurs not so much around here, but in other districts and other states, where teachers can't be flexible enough to act in different roles. And we definitely need that to happen here. That's a great, so that's one I really spent a lot of time on. Dual enrollment. Now, we talked about it earlier, we've got an embedded dual enrollment. Got a tremendous teacher coming in with the college skills class, two callbacks a week. These 14 kids come, and she's teaching them communication skills, presentation skills, soft skills, all these things they need to be successful in college and the, and the world beyond. And she's doing a tremendous job, the kids are pretty jazzed about it, as a matter of fact. But we also have Michael Thomas qualified to be able to teach through his writing workshop, introductory college writing. And then Nancy is statistics, right? And so she qualifies to teach statistics. We always knew we had college teachers around here. They will simultaneously earn college and high school credit. Parents accrue no tuition costs. The Vermont State College System and UVM shall work together to provide opportunities. This language comes out of Act 77. Students can only take one per school year, beginning the summer after sophomore year. Now, this has changed a little bit since the first draft came through, all right? There's been some edits. Who exactly is paying for this? The state shall pay 50% of the tuition owed to public post-secondary education from the Next Generation Initiative Fund for the next two years, anyway. All right, that's where they're getting the money, is from the Next Generation Fund, I believe that's grant power. I believe that's from.
50% of it, you said.
Yeah, that's from Gates. The rest of it's going to come from other state funds for two years. I'll explain the rest. After two years, for any course where the college pays the instructor, the student's district, district shall pay 90% of the tuition amount at CCV. That's after two years, that's what the plan is right now. For the next two years, for any course where the high school pays the instructor, the student's district shall pay 20% of the tuition amount at CCV. All right? Because, for obvious reasons. After two years, for any course, I'm sorry, that was the next two years. After two years, any course where the high school pays the instructor, the student's district shall pay 50% of the tuition amount at CCV. Nothing in the bill constrains the ability of the school to award secondary credits, to enter into arrangements with private post-secondary institutions with local funds or taking more than two courses. Again, only paid by local funds. So we have the ability to choose to throw money, good money after good money. But, you know, that's going to be a board policy, I would think.
So, let me make sure I got it right. Nancy teaches seven students Stats 101. And for each of those seven students, the district sends 20% of that credit value that it would cost at CCV. We send 20% of that money to CCV in order for CCV to give the kids the credit that Nancy's teaching them.
And you're paying me.
Sorry?
And you're paying me.
No, no, I get that.
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, so, and, and for the first two years, it's part of the Gates grant, I believe, or.
Right, but after that, that would be the deal.
Well, after that's up in the air. At this point, it looks like it would revert to local funds. So, but I'm, but, you know, I haven't heard the last word on that, you know?
That sounds like, that sounds reasonable to me, for an accredited school to administer credits to students that they don't have matriculated. I think, that sounds about right, 20%.
I don't know, I mean, you, do you pay a transfer credit when you have to transfer from one organization, institution to another? Or do they accept the credits?
They accept, because they're all part of the whole ecosystem.
In Act 77, it says that, that, that CCV's setting it up, or if UVM is the, is the accrediting institution, that they're going to set up a free transfer. There's actually language in there somewhere, and I can't quote it.
Just trying to figure out how much, what, what, what is coming here.
Yeah, otherwise, we wouldn't be able to give the, the students credit, because.
There's also early college, and early college is an interesting idea. But it, right now, it centers mostly around VAST, and, and that's the Vermont Academy of Science and Technology, and it's give, it's provided through Vermont Tech. And there's a cap at 60. But here's where it starts getting a little, it makes me nervous. We've had kids go through this program, and it's fantastic. I mean, we had a girl two years ago, went there instead of her senior year here. And she's off and running, she's a great student, going to be a nurse, just excellent, excellent program, all right? Or any program, and they're urging UVM, State College, or CCV to develop similar programs. Students forego their senior year in college for freshman college credits. Now, financial considerations for early college, there's a limited number of spots available. The Agency of Education pays 87% of the student's tuition. There's a catch to that. The school district cannot claim that student for average daily membership, therefore receiving no dollars back from the state. The dollars follow the student, district loses money, all right? So tuition only is paid, so equity issues for rural or poor students are bound. Because she, our student, I'm not going to violate her rights, drove up to Williston every day, to the Williston campus. We don't have, all of our students have that ability. And if they're poor and rural in Addison County, it limits the possibility to participate in VAST and other programs. So somehow, we're going to have to get some of those programs coming this way. And you beat me to it. We met, we have met the enemy, and he is us. I'm old enough to know, remember Pogo. And local control cannot stand up to government mandates, is what I'm thinking. Conclusions and additions, Act 77 behaves in most ways as an unfunded mandate. PLPs require teacher time. After two years, we'll have to find a way to fund dual enrollment. And early college economically penalizes high schools in favor of Vermont colleges. Act 129, High School, High School Choice, de-incentifies high schools improving to attract more students because of numerical limits and no economic advantage. Hence, the money in that case does not follow the student. So South Burlington was serving 38 kids that were choice kids and paying tuition to go to South Burlington. School Choice came along, and they ask us to set limits. Ours is 10 outgoing, 10 incoming. You know what South Burlington did? One incoming, 30 outgoing, all right? To protect themselves, we weren't that cynical, all right? The 7th cent increase on the tax rate was my appeal decision, not local. No Child Left Behind, kneecap testing, Common Core, and S-Back are worse than unfunded mandates. They've cost local budgets a ton in professional development and testing costs and in personnel costs. And Nancy alone can tell you, after my first round of testing here, in math, where we didn't, we, we didn't meet the free and reduced lunch, we started a chain of professional development mathematics, it hasn't stopped, has it?
Slowed down for the pilot.
Slowed down a little bit, but a lot of that came out of, you know, local budget, of course. And testing costs, when you're testing, you're not teaching, all right? When you're testing, you're not doing a lot of valuable things. And personnel costs, because obviously, we've got to keep up with that. And then finally, I don't know, that's my favorite moment. There's a catch 22. How many people know that federal special ed IDEA law calls for us to educate IEP students until they're 22, if necessary? Yet, No Child Left Behind punishes schools for not graduating them in four years. So if we don't graduate a special ed kid in four years, and he's on a multi-year plan that should take him up until his 22nd birthday, we get whacked on our average yearly, annual yearly progress by No Child Left Behind. And I, I, I submit to you that the federal government's a lot more of a difficulty than state government. But still, the government is, is pushing us in some directions where we seek, we, we have real costs that we really don't see.
Can I add that in the sense that, that also that a lot of the funding that those children who do transition to adult services don't start until they're over 19 or older? So that they're not going to leave, because they're not going to get the money for where they want to go next. So they're going to stay in school, because where else would they go, where else would they get services?
So it's sort of, it's sort of a conundrum. Thank you, that's, I forgot that.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ed or Stephanie? Tom?
This is information for the board in terms of the next vote, and timelines and procedures. That's your request, Kurt.
Thank you.
I want to draw your attention to the highlighted paragraph on the back. If the proposed, if the proposed budget is rejected, the Union High School Board, Union District Board shall prepare a revised budget. The Board shall establish a date for the vote on the revised budget and take appropriate steps to warn a public informational meeting on the budget and the vote. The date of the public informational meeting shall be at least five days following the public notice. The date of the vote shall be at least seven days following the notice. The vote on the revised budget shall be by Australian ballot, shall take place in the same locations that the first vote was taken. The budget shall be established if a majority of all votes cast are in favor. If the revised budget is rejected, the Board shall repeat the procedure for this subsection until the budget is adopted. So it's a short, it can be a short turnaround, but you, depending on your deliberations and conversation that you had earlier, once you've identified a target for a budget that you want to put out there for a vote, it's pretty short time before the vote occurs. You don't have to wait the 30 and 40 days that we do for the town meeting day vote.
So it's fundamentally, it's seven days from the warning to the vote?
Right.
As long as you can fit a public meeting in.
Right.
Yeah, and it has to be at the same. So what, what's the deal with co-mingling?
Yeah, oh, thank you. Thank you.
You know, I, I know for a fact that whether we co-mingle or not, Chet always counted the ballots.
Well, they're, these are, actually, let me, let me clarify. For folks who may, no, no. The votes, the ballots for the district, for the school, our school district are to be co-mingled and counted as one, correct?
That's supposedly, but here it says we can vote on it. If the Union School District has voted to co-mingle its ballots.
It's in your high school bylaws.
Yeah, so that's where we voted, right?
Because they are clearly not. They were not for the bond, and they were supposed to be.
Yeah, it's published.
Yeah, the only time that the high school.
I'll send a note to the new town clerk, in Ferrisburg at least. Well, that, so that's the information I think we shared earlier, five to seven days, repeat until successful. Obviously, I don't think we're going to, you know, try to repeat every five or seven days. But, you know, back to what you were saying, Christina. But, you know, back to what you were saying, Christina, um, it's March now. I, I can't imagine doing anything, um, you know, less than April.
Meeting probably April, so.
Yeah.
Probably be made in order.
Yeah, so, uh, have a, a budget ready for the next, uh, board meeting, and then, uh, approve the notices and, and have a vote in April.
We have some other deadlines that we need to be aware of.
Okay.
In that process, particular contracts.
Okay.
We have an April fifteenth deadline to notify people.
For letters.
So maybe earlier.
Could be.
The flip side being that letters can't go out until we have a budget. Is that correct?
We can't, we can't confirm employment without a budget.
Right.
So three-ten.
Kurt, prior to that, you were talking about a workshop or two?
Yeah, certainly I'd like to have more than one in case someone who really wants to be at one can't make one of them.
So that's gonna, I think the progress there, or lack thereof, is going to inform, uh, the date for any budget vote.
So three-ten, three-thirty, we have three weeks to the end of this month. So, to do it twice. Could have one before the board meeting and one at the board meeting.
We don't necessarily have to be ready for the first Monday in April. I mean, we could warn a special meeting to adopt a budget after doing some work at that April meeting as well. You know, being mindful of, um, the preferences that Jeff expressed.
And unfortunately, we can't ask whether, uh, we can meet all the, those criteria. Well, I think we should plan to, to have at least one, um, special budget meeting in the next two weeks. And then go from there. So, is that, and that has to be warned as well, sorry. Today's the tenth.
Kurt, could you work in committee to go over budget stuff, or does it, it all has to be a public vote? Like, can you?
Well, first you have to establish a committee, give it authorization and responsibility, and we haven't done that. Because we didn't know who was gonna be on the board until now, and we still don't know, so.
Good, I'm sorry, would you clarify that a little bit? Why, why can't we create a committee today?
Uh, we could. I didn't say we couldn't, but we haven't.
I was just thinking, if you had a committee, you could at least maybe meet with the staff in, in committee?
Mm-hmm.
Because the staff and the public, you know, the staff have things to say and ideas and things to share, and that, that necessarily might not be so productive in a big public meeting.
Well, I think you heard, at least me, sort of articulate the same sentiment.
Right, so, and they have, I mean, you need that input, I, I think, in order to move forward. From the staff and.
And, and I guess what I'm saying is, why do we need to create a committee to do that? Unless we're gonna give the committee some authorization and responsibility.
Fact finding or an answer or.
Yeah.
But we can do that in an open session, too, right?
It's just.
We just wanna do it in a, in a manner where we have sort of, um, collected input, I guess.
I wanna avoid creating committees, because committees of elected boards have a definition and, you know, I, I don't wanna limit the, the conversation by law.
You just said earlier, you were gonna create a financial committee or.
I'd love to, yeah. But I don't know anyone who's, I asked everyone on the board to volunteer, and no one volunteered, so.
I wasn't here. I'll volunteer.
Okay.
And, and I think it's incredibly important to do that right now.
Okay.
I mean, that's all I've heard in all the three board, board, board meetings I've been to is complaints about inability to see our financials and understand them.
Okay.
So, should I move to, I'm not very good at this.
Yes, so you would, you would, you would, if you, if you wanna, if you wanna create a committee, you move to create a committee to, to explore the budget. But are you doing it to understand the financials, or are you doing it to craft a budget recommendation that the board can look at for?
I think it's really important to talk to staff as well, and maybe that, maybe it can be done under the financial committee. And I think there's a long-term benefit to a financial committee.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
But there's, there's also a short-term issue, which is, we have a communication problem.
So your motion might seek to establish a financial committee, the first appointed task of which would be to work on the budget?
That sounds good.
Can I ask a question? Um, in, I've been through many budget processes in, in my history. This is the first one that I've done here. And, um, in every one, the, the board gave the administrators a charge, a target. And it was then the administrator's job to craft a budget proposal involving reductions, um, staffing issues. I mean, we, we were hired for a reason to do that, and I haven't heard that be part of this conversation yet. Tonight.
Yeah.
And I, I, I mean, that's, it's as if, um, I'm, I'm feeling as if we wouldn't be taking staff input or faculty input into consideration in that. We, we have a, a plan going forward. We have been talking to faculty, we've been receiving input from department chairs and faculty. We've essentially spent, you know, the last two weeks doing nothing but looking at our numbers and our staffing and our enrollments in order to do that, and I, I just want to make sure that that is part of this plan going forward. I, um, I, we have skills in that area, and, and I hope that you'll tap that in this conversation.
If, if I could respond or assuage your concern, I, I've heard from, um, my constituents of the desire to make sure that staff are heard in the process, and I get that. And I understand why that's important, particularly in this, you know, it's a really pressurized juncture. But you, I mean, you are the building administrators, and you are in charge of leadership of the building and driving the program. So if there's a conversation that occurs amongst a committee of the board to craft the budget, in my opinion, you have to be at the table. But I don't think it's unreasonable for members of your staff, as you determine to be suitable, to also be at the table.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, and it's kind of a bit of your call, obviously, to figure out how, who, but I think the, the opportunity for the community to know that the whole commu-, the whole, inside the school community, including the board and the administration, pulled together to come up with the next step. I think that's important.
I, I mean, I, I think Ed and I were hoping that we would leave this meeting with a, a charge from the board, a, a direction in which to go in looking at our programs again and coming forward with a proposal for, uh, a reduced budget.
Okay. So, do you feel the committee would do that, uh, in conjunction with the administrators, or?
Oh, certainly.
Yeah. So, but by law, if we create a committee of this board, that committee needs to have a definition of what their responsibilities are and what they are authorized to do. So, um, we have a motion on the floor. I didn't hear a second.
Did, what, did you make a motion yet?
I, I.
I was just sort of smoothing your motion up.
Yes, yes.
I don't know that a committee is, is how we would get this done.
Well, what's the alternative, though?
The, there is a process in place. When, the last time we created a budget, um, the board, um, asked the, the administrators to put together a budget based on a percentage increase. And, um, the, the administrators have a process to go to their department heads, or, that's not what you call them, what do you? Yeah, department heads. And they ask them for input, and once they get that input, if they wanna go deeper into the organization, the department heads can go deeper into the faculty to understand what the needs are, or to get more detail, or do more investigation. So that process is, is happening already. I don't know how creating a committee to talk about what can be talked about in an open meeting is going to do. My idea about having a financial committee is that we, there are certain things that are happening that need, um, to happen between board meetings. And, and, and I believe that we should delegate, um, responsible individuals, the authority and the responsibility to do, do those, make those decisions. That's what I see in a financial auditing committee. Like, why can't we get the auditors to give us a timely report? You have the charge to go find that out, and I want you to come back to us and tell us why. That, that would be what I would expect that committee to do. So if, but I, I'm.
That's separate from helping put together a budget.
Yeah, I'm not against having a committee to make a budget, but there are so many processes, processes in place right now. We ask the administration to bring us a budget based on certain criteria. The previous criteria was for a four-and-a-half percent increase. The four-and-a-half percent increase based on the administrator's input was going to, uh, require a certain amount of reductions in the budget.
Four-and-a-half percent increase in spending or in the tax rate?
In spending.
Right.
Let's not go here again.
It's just.
Yeah. So, so we went through that process. If we'd like to go through that process again, I'm not quite sure we have direction from, uh, the people that were here tonight of where to go. Do we cut a hundred thousand dollars? Do we cut one percent? Do we, um, you know, what do we do?
You haven't had those conversations either, Kurt, and part of what you might consider in your workshops is making sure that you call contingencies in to provide testimony or information, or whatever it happens to be, to board.
You create a model.
Help it make its decisions.
And in that model, you have variables, and based on different scenarios, multi-scenario analysis, you can decide what happens when we do this, what happens when we do that. It's, um, I, I don't think you need a committee to do that unless you're going to give the committee the authorization to make decisions. And that's the only reason I'm opposed to it.
Okay, so, excuse me.
Yeah.
I'm not seeing a, uh, I'm not hearing you say that there is a, uh, difference or anything in between either a committee or asking the administration to give us cuts.
I, I think there is. I think you've already volunteered to do that.
So, when, what you're saying is the workshops, that's what you're saying is the in-between?
Yeah.
And, but it's not a committee with a charge?
Right.
But we will take recommendations from them.
Certainly.
That's really actually where I was headed.
Yeah, and that's what the workshop, and that's why I'm trying to set a date for a workshop, so that people will have a time, and they'll have the knowledge that at that time, we're going to be discussing a multi-scenario analysis of the budget and be able to create variables and to look at the, the ways that things. But the, the, in order to set a, you know, a precedent, I was hoping tonight to come to a point where we as a board could say, you know, what we're gonna do in that meeting two weeks hence. What are we gonna do? Are we going to reduce the budget? Are we going to, uh, look at, uh, reducing staff? You know, do we have to make that decision now? I don't know.
I don't think you have to make that decision now. I think the decision you make now is how you're gonna structure the workshops and what you intend to get out of them, because ultimately, I'm guessing, you're gonna come out with a new budget.
Yeah, I, I mean, what, part of the public tonight told us, if we have an auditor's report at the next vote, twenty percent more people will vote for it.
So what?
That's good information.
We'll bust our butt to get.
To get an auditor's, auditor's report, or at least a, you know, an opinion.
Want to hear from staff.
Yeah.
You probably wanna hear from, um, uh, teachers as well as support staff.
Yeah.
You wanna hear from community members, you wanna hear from parents, you wanna hear, there are a number of resources to help you make your decision.
Yeah.
Including what Chris, he's not here now, but what he mentioned earlier.
Yeah.
What progress is occurring at the state level in that regard.
Right.
But Kurt, if I could just add my two cents worth. I'm, I'm struck by the, the small voice of the administrators in making these determinations. I, I would expect, I, I guess the lesson that I learned in, in Addison, and we've had to have cuts for five years in a row, is that you want input from your staff, you want input from parents, but ultimately, the board would be looking for a recommendation from the administration about what they thought should be done. And I think it is asking too much to think that a committee of staff members are going to be able to agree on what needs to be cut and what needs to be eliminated. I think it just puts the staff in a very difficult position. Input is one thing, but I'm just concerned that in having sort of the board and a staff committee and maybe some representation from, from Stephanie and Ed, trying to make these decisions, you kind of muddy the water of the people that you're paying to make those decisions. And, and I, I don't mean any disrespect by it, but I'm just struck by the fact that you've got the board doing this, getting together with the community, and, and yet you're paying these people good money, and they should be the ones kind of sticking their necks out and saying, okay, you told us to come up with fifty thousand or whatever it is, and, and here's our recommendation. And we checked it out with the staff, and they had a whole process and involved a lot of different people. But ultimately, I would think you'd want a clear recommendation to either take it or leave it. Now, for what's, what it's worth, that, that's my take, and that's sort of what we tried to do in Addison, because I certainly wouldn't expect that my classroom teachers were gonna be able to agree, which part of our program, everybody, are we gonna cut? It's just really hard for people to do that. Neil.
One of the reasons the Toyota Motor Corporation is so good at making cars and why they sell so many of them is because they re-engineer their process for creating their vehicles at the staff level. It's inculcated into their organizational gestalt. Everybody's got a voice. Now, you guys are in charge. We know that. You're paid the big bucks to do that. But if folks do not feel like they have a voice, it is a much harder sell. It just is. And I am not at all averse to hearing multiple people express how they feel things should be. Now, we had tremendous turnout, as you know, at the budget meetings where, well, I'll keep my counsel. We had tremendous turnout, and we heard a lot of reasons why a lot of excellent programs need to continue. And I believe and voted for the fact that they do. The voters have spoken. We're in the situation we're in. I think there's a lot of intelligent people in this building who might be able to provide some insights to complement the, to fundamentally complement or assist in the tough decision-making that these two will ultimately have to do.
Right, that those two will ultimately have to make a clear recommendation.
And, and.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with the, the voice part of it at all. I'm just saying, I, I just hope it comes out that the board does have a couple clear, actionable items, rather than trying to come to a consensus about what some of those things might be. I'm just suggesting it could be really difficult to get to that point. I would hope they could, but I just know it's really difficult for people to have that conversation within the staff when you ultimately may be recommending decreasing another department, and it just, it just makes it tough, that's all.
For instance, Mark Powers was, and I sat down for, I don't know, it was an hour. We went through the budget line by line and found many of the suggestions that I made to Stephanie and hence to you guys when we were charged with cutting sixty-five thousand dollars. Mark had a lot to say with that. Three or four department chairs. I didn't ask Nancy, 'cause we're gonna leave her alone, because of course, you know, because of course, sign-ups. But, you know, we, we do have all the data, and we do have all the design. And, uh, I, I don't want people to think that we were just, except for the first six hundred thousand dollars, which we had just a little bit of time to cut. The hypothetical, the real cuts that we've made have been very informed by faculty, you know? I've had a department give up their books, science, alright? I've had another department give up their books, alright? I've had other departments that are going to half their book budget so social studies can run their new program. We've got people sacrificing all over the place, and, but there's been, I don't want people to think there hasn't been a lot of. We've got people sacrificing all over the place and, but there's been, I don't want people to think there hasn't been a lot of dialogue here. I mean, the dialogue Mark and I had is pretty exceptional because it was a line-by-line reading of the entire budget with one of my teachers who's got some management experience. So, I mean, we're, we are out there trying to find people that will help shape our thought processes. I don't want the board to think that it's all or nothing. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, I'm an administrator, but I'm also an educator, I'm primarily an educator. So, like, these, these conversations are very painful, and yet we still continue to have them. And, you know, I sort of agree with Wayne in, in a sense that I think we got, there are avenues of input that we can get and make it public. We got a Google Doc going around right now where people are posting their ideas on how we might save money. You know, certain efficiencies, things like that. I haven't checked the Google Doc today because I was busy making that, but it's, it's out there. And there are, and if somebody suggested another way to make sure that the conversation flowed straight to the board so the board could see or let, give you guys access to the Google Doc, I mean, that would be sort of an electronic way to share, and it might not be as, as time-consuming.
I have a question. Is there a way for you guys to put, like, three proposals together, like, you know, like the worst possible thing that no one wants? Something in the middle of the road and, I mean, is that a way to go where you kind of come up with several different options? Two or three?
Cadillac, a Chevy, a Yugo.
Something like that, yeah.
We, we have a draft of that, but we're, you know, we're looking again for some guidance.
Right.
You know, someone said a hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand, five hundred thousand dollar cuts, you know, it's-
Can't you just pick those three figures and go for it then?
Well, I mean, but, but we're not just talking about books then.
I understand that, I do understand that, yes.
The reason, the reason not to do that is you, you don't wanna scare people unnecessarily.
Right, yeah. If we're gonna make a proposal, we feel compelled to tell people, you are, your position is part of this proposal. We need you to know because that's what we're gonna present to the board.
But it's hard to make a decision without really looking at, you know, what is the worst-case scenario? What is the Cadillac and what is whatever car you're using? You know, like, you wanna, you need to be able to sort of compare and look at what you'd be giving up.
So, so here's a, here's a possibility. The, one scenario would be we do nothing with the budget. We have the auditor's report, and that's one scenario. And that should increase our votes by twenty percent and the budget passes. A second scenario would be we have the auditor's report and pick a number. We reduce the budget by a pick-a-number, and we bring that to the public. But there's, I, I still haven't heard from anyone what the edict is. The edict wasn't, you know, it's too much money in your budget. The edict was, I can't pay those property taxes. So, the only way that we can affect property taxes is to cut our budget. And even then, we don't have a linear relationship to how much we cut our budget to how, you know, much less you pay in property taxes. So, we're back to the same situation. So, is a multi-scenario, you know, there's really nothing left to cut in the budget unless we cut people. So, the worst-case scenario is to say, what, what would it look like based on our enrollment? Here comes your direction. If we cut people? Our enrollment, and this is a, a good time to pass this out. Our enrollment is projected to be down to, you know, five hundred in 2015. You know, there's copies of that, and our cost per pupil is going the wrong way.
And our cost per pupil is being amplified by the deficit.
Yeah.
And increased special ed costs, which by pupil is huge, huge.
And impacts the overall-
It shouldn't be included in that.
Is that per pupil include special ed? Because a lot of the calculations don't include special ed.
This is, this says cost per pupil. It's fifteen thousand, so I hope that-
That would be with special ed.
Yeah, I hope that includes special ed. It's gone from ten thousand to fifteen thousand since 2008.
I think Mark's been trying to get a word in, Kurt.
Go ahead, Mark.
I just wonder if we can look at it from the opposite direction where we get together with everyone who is a stakeholder and knows some stuff about this situation and say, not throw a number at it, but throw, we'll develop the number that we think that if we go through this again, we can cut down to this point without losing human resources and all that, which gives us time to then perhaps re-task some of those human resources into some of the things, the PLPs, PBGR, all these different things. It's, it's not how many science kids I have in my room. It's, I have science and I have other responsibilities, so we can look at that metric. And I think that that's what we should do first, but rather than, here's a number to go with because we don't know what the taxpayers are gonna do with that number anyway.
Right.
And if we reduce that two perc, two-point-five percent by X number, is that gonna make any difference anyway?
So, what we do know is property tax increased by thirteen percent, yes.
Right.
For Genes. Property tax increased by fifteen percent, no, Ferrisburg.
Yeah.
So, does that say we cut it by two percent so that the property tax goes down by two percent?
But a two percent cut in the budget is not gonna decrease the property tax by two percent.
Yeah, we have to reduce the budget so that it affects the tax rate by two percent.
But I guess if-
And you know how much that's gonna be?
Or if we go back to the taxpayer and say, look, we've worked on this, all these different people worked together. This is how much we think we can do without really jeopardizing the programs that we have here and hope that maybe the wounds have healed from the, you know, the state and sending a message and all those types of things that are what we're also hearing. I mean, I, I hover over my ballot in Charlotte, which is, you know, not where I really wanna be paying taxes, but anyway, it's a lot of money and I get it, I'm a taxpayer too. And I think most people would push cane to shove and say, look, this is for the benefit of the kids. This is the best we can do, support us, and with good information, I think they would.
And, and I really think that if we have that and we have the audit report that allows us to clearly articulate, folks, there's no smoke and mirrors. This is what the budget really looks like. This is where the deficit really comes from. I think we will be able to pass a budget. I think people wanna support the school. I think the simple fact that the elementary schools sailed through, except for Ferrisburg for the reasons that it didn't, is clearly indicative that there's a mistrust at our high school financials, and we just need to clarify that.
Hi. Ladies first.
I just think that there is mistrust in the public with the high school financials. And I'm not sure that the audit report is going to totally turn that around. It will-
What will?
It will help.
Rather than saying what won't, tell me what will.
I think that you've got to cut the budget. As hard as it is-
And that'll make people believe our budget numbers?
Not necessarily, but it, there's just so much mistrust in what goes on here at the high school and the programs, not the, not the staff and not the faculty, but it's just that something's gotta give. There's unlimited spending in special ed. And there's not unlimited spending in the normal kids. They keep getting cut and cut and cut because special ed keeps going up all the time, and it's not-
Let's just say all education is funded by rules, and we follow the rules. So, I, I'd rather not go down that road anymore, so.
Good. I mean, that's, you've gotta build the trust up in the, with the public.
Yeah. So, you're saying the only way we're gonna build trust is to cut the budget? How much?
You've got to have the audit, and you've got not only just this year's audit, but the rest of your audits from now on, you need to be in a more timely way.
Okay. I can't make that promise, but it certainly is something that we can strive to do. So, how much, how much do you think we should cut the budget?
It's a two percent increase, it's a two percent increase over last year.
Yeah, we, we've al-
Two percent.
We've already cut the budget, by the way, you know? When you, when you only increase the expenditures by two-point-three percent.
That's a decrease.
That's a decrease.
You've sort of already offered the Cadillac.
Oh, no.
What?
That was not what that was, no.
I'd be curious to hear what Representative Lanfor has to say. I'm sorry.
It's appropriate for me in this specific situation. I hope you don't mind, Mr. Chair, if I just make, make a comment. Being your voice in Montpelier, I take this role extraordinarily serious and, and I'm very, very heartsick that our community is in the position it is due to a variety of reasons. Some of them outside of our control, some of them fear mongering that occurs because of what's going on. And then there are many that are at heart at work trying to make sense of it and trying to make our way into a new future. So, I'm gonna ask the board, what you would like from me in Montpelier? As I go back tomorrow morning, and I'm pretty sure that the next two weeks or plus will be a tsunami of activity, because I'm gonna offer you a date if you think, and I, it's tough to figure out what the voters want. If you go back with reducing it a hundred dollars, will, will it be a yes then? And do we think that the activity in Montpelier will change what happens? If we are able to bring some relief to the seven cents? The seven cents is still out there unless something is changed. We waited to see if the statewide budgets came in at a rate that maybe brought that seven cents down to maybe six cents. Has there been a significant change? We don't know until we see those numbers. But I know that there's a date, March fifteenth is crossover, unless all agree, would be the magic date for us to scramble to get things back over to the House, to the Senate, and vice versa. But any money bills have to originate from the House, so that's on our side of the building. And as the chair has mentioned, we've been on the road. Legislators have been talking, there's been a lot of conversations on how to go into the future. It is my hope that we'll be able to, within the next two weeks, offer the state of Vermont, which we've been working on for a while. And I welcome the governor's joining us today, as I hear that he has, and, and joining us and looking for a solution to bring a short-term piece of relief, that seven cents down to maybe three, maybe four. No guarantees, but I think we can, we, that's our task to do. And will, will Virgin's and the voters in this district change their appearance at the number? I, I don't know unless we hear from, hear from them. And I'm actually a little bit disappointed that all of those who have made such deep comments are not here tonight to, to see us through this next level and ask them what they would like us to do next to get to yes. Did they say no? I got messages saying they're gonna vote no to send me a message. I asked them, just send me a no. It's a lot easier than putting education into turmoil. I think the message has been heard, and I think we'll do the best that we can. And I appreciate the work that this board has put into this, and it's, you know, it's been twelve years since the budget has ever gone down in this community. And we are a little searching for the answer. And I caution myself at also trying to reach for the first, first possible answer because is it always the best? So, we take a breath and we'll, so I'm gonna ask you, how would you like me in the next two to three weeks be of any assistance to, to you?
Call him in.
Pardon?
Call him in.
Okay.
I think, I think, and we had a little bit of this discussion this afternoon. The biggest change this year has been in the property tax rate. We started hearing about that, what, December? People coming in and talking about the rates for this current year. And that was fueled in part by changes that occurred this past year. Now, we've got seven cents on the tax rate before we even get started. And that's not because of what boards did at local levels. It's because of what the state did at the state level. And if the governor has a spine, and I hope he does, he'll come out and say they're gonna find a way to remove that seven cents and then look at budgets for what they are.
So, the breakdown that we hear on my end of the, the other side. Forty-seven million increased spending across the state, so that's not in our, you know, ten million in increased special ed, which is not as flexible. And, and a part of that is the reduction of federal funding. Air money's gone, the buffer is not there. And then, without negotiation, it's the twenty million we used last year to empty out the savings to keep the seven cents that would've been last year to make it five. And it's because of boards and other work, because earlier on, a year and a half ago, we were hearing this year was going to be nine, that we were tracking at nine cents. And because of a lot of work, it was down to seven.
Diane, if I could offer, as your constituent, just a thought is, and no need to get into the details now at all, but I do think some forthright conversation about what fund current use really lives in would be appropriate.
It's a large number, you know, current use because is there-
It's, yeah, it's what makes Vermont special, just like our support of our educational program. So, we don't need to go in there, but-
No, but I'm, I'm aware.
Yeah.
Chair.
Sorry to join you late. I, I would offer the following. If you look back over ten years, the percentage of the ed fund that's now funded by the property tax has grown from sixty-one percent to sixty-eight or sixty-nine percent. Roll it back. I'm, I'm, I'm tired of listening to governors from both parties proudly proclaim that they've raised no broad-based taxes while shifting tremendous cost onto the property tax. So, have some spine, your phrase? Let's have some spine. Let's go back to what the mix was when Act sixty-eight was enacted.
Before the challenges were changed.
And two is, it's frustrating to have members of the legislature say, well, what are the mandates? What can we do? Okay? The legislature, year after year after year, brings mandates down on schools. And that needs to be recognized, and it needs to stop. So, last year it was the concussion bill with no funding to come along with it. It was the personal learning pathways that require staff to implement that. And the third piece is the multiple pathways. Am I using the flexible path? So, now we're gonna pay college tuition out of our high school budget based on the property tax? I would ask you to talk to your colleagues. Don't ask us what the mandates are. I would ask you all to just stop it or fund it. Thank you.
Our meeting is quickly turning towards a, let's grill the legislator. Sorry, Diane.
Diane's the only one that can-
I, I mean, I'd like you to bring that back. I mean, it's that clear? You know, when they say, well, we don't know what it is, it's, it happens year after year after year.
I, I'd ask you, other the fact that I have learned that I go from, from situations in the last six years to try to go do something correct, and I can miss the target and think that I put a lot of energy into X and Y is really where we needed to hit the bullet. So, I wanted to be very clear. And, and because some schools mandate issues are less of what gives them pain than others, I wanted to know specifically what our school was, and so that I could target if we were gonna see about either getting a waiver or removing or seeking funds for, getting right down to the nitty-gritty, what are they?
So, it was thirty-five thousand dollars this year for-
That was it, I know exactly.
For the concussion bill?
And then, for some reason, which doesn't make sense to me either, soccer seems to be left out of that mix?
Not anymore.
That seems to be a little odd.
No, you guys added that in there now.
Okay, well.
Okay, no more us versus them.
All right.
It's probably fifty thousand now.
But I'm not sure what, even, you know, if the voters in this situation, what they'll do even if we brought three cents back, would it make that a difference? even if we brought three cents back, would it make a difference? Did they check no without looking at the number? I'm not- I don't know.
It's certainly my impression that the voters voted against a 14% increase in the property taxes. That is certainly my impression. So, and the majority of that increase over last year is the seven cents. So, if Montpelier came down with three cents, we're talking about a 5% or 6% increase in our property taxes. That would definitely pass.
No, you know what? I won't. But there'll be 85% of legislators that'll go to their budget's passed. They're not- they're fine. 85% of the state passed.
I think-
That's a majority.
People were frustrated frequently with me at least. They would ask if we knew about the deficit when we put up the bond at the same time, and I'm like, "Does it really make a difference?" I have to build a roof, and I still have to pay for these, if you want to call them unfunded mandates. So, does it really matter whether I knew or not? I can't choose not to fund either of them. But I feel like people were frustrated with that idea that they were getting hit with two waves of things that were going to be costly, one after another, and not able to, like, digest or feel like they paid for one and then the next later on.
What's frustrating educators, or at least administrators, and I'm sure most educators too, is that it feels a little bit like a bait and switch since this is my ninth year here. You know, we've been encouraged, first, the transformation grant, and then all the extra monies we've received to be a transformative high school and to lead Vermont into greener pastures of education and do a better job personalizing education. Governor is heavily into personalized education. We swallowed the Kool-Aid, and here it is, nine, 10 years down the road in this transformation, where we're finding that we're going to lose, we're going to lose the number of qualified professionals we need to do the transformational education that we've been asked to by the state. So, it feels like a little bit of a betrayal. And I know it has nothing to do necessarily with your committees, but it does.
But I represent this community there, and I have to tell you that I also bring the voice that it is our district that met challenges for change. And what was expressed tonight, and what did we get for it?
So, I hate to cut this short, but I've just been asked to advise everyone that is starting to ice outside, so. And I need to ask, is there still a need for an executive session? Yeah, I realize that. I'm just trying to pare things down a little.
Not necessary.
Okay.
So, did we get through your report?
We did.
Okay.
So, just to finish up the town meeting day reflections and next steps, we did a lot of reflecting, and I appreciate everyone being here to do that. I still don't feel like there's a clear message as to what needs to be done. So, I'd like to set a date to have a workshop to do a multi-scenario analysis. It sounds like you have five days before you need to make a decision about what you can cross over. We have, you know, more time than that. It would be nice to know that you're doing that. It will help us make decisions. But I'd like to propose that we meet on the 24th of March for a workshop.
Okay.
All right.
Monday, 24?
Monday, the 24th.
Six o'clock.
I wasn't going to choose St. Patty's Day, that's for sure.
What time?
Six o'clock.
Oh, is that next Monday?
March 24.
March 24.
It's- this is going to be a board meeting?
It's going to be a budget workshop.
A special meeting.
Special meeting, so warned, public, and under the rules of public meetings. Yeah. Yes.
That one day happens to be the governor's lunch at Middlebury Legion.
So, maybe you can spend the night. Bring him on up.
I work for my district.
I know a few state policemen that would be glad to bring him here.
They would. I mean, I do- there's a definite separation of powers there.
Well, you know, let him know that we're planning to meet that night, and if he'd like to spend the night, we can find some place for him to stay. So, that's the discussion items, and we need to approve the bills and director's orders. Chris, Steve?
Yes, it's for $406,059. $59.29. 29.
29, thanks.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the bills and director's orders of $406,059.29. Any other discussion?
Everything look proper in there?
Fine, as always.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Are there any personnel matters? I don't see any other items on here. The next meeting date is going to be March 26, which is the Addison Northwest Supervisor Union Board Meeting, and then April 14 for the next board meeting for Virgen's Union High School.
And March 24 for our special meeting.
Yeah, we've added March 24.
Did Kathy have a handout?
Yep. Who does?
Kathy left these before she-
Yeah. She left these too. If anyone would like a graphic of the Virgen's Union High School enrollment and equalized pupils, as well as cost per pupil?
Is this for us?
Thank you.
Make sure Chris passes them on.
May I make a quick comment to Mr. Webber?
Yes.
When I read the comment you made about not having enough students for the teachers that we have, it left me speechless, and I'm wondering if it would be a good idea for us to maybe clarify that a little.
In a traditional model, that's absolutely true. The public has been asking for, I think, the raw data of what a traditional school's staffing would look like. And in a traditional manner, I think Stephanie agrees with me, we're light without being able, without having described, as Mark would say, how you parse a teacher's job. Saturday, Grant Wiggins came out with his blog, and it comes up with a whole list of how we should be hiring teachers and for what. You know, what's the percentage of mentorship? What's the percentage of, for instance, PBGR work that they do in opposition to their, or in contradistinction to their academic specialty? And it's thought-provoking. I'll send it out to the board because it's thought-provoking. But again, I don't want to hide behind, you know, personally, I was tired of hiding behind technicalities and wishes and all that stuff. And, you know, Jeff has said before, he needs the data on student-teacher ratio. And, you know, as a traditional student-teacher ratio, what I said was true. If the board would have, will say that we can transform those teaching jobs into a more flexible, malleable, and successful job description, that's what we'd like. But, you know, the public doesn't even scratch the surface. Their knowledge doesn't even begin to explain how the teachers' roles have changed, for instance, since, like, when Kathy was in high school. You know, it's a completely different ballgame. And we won't be, we will not be able to transform without, if we lose many teachers, we won't be able to continue the transformation of education that we're leading right now. But I just felt like I had to, I have enough people asking me for raw, sort of raw data that I had to, I had to give them the raw data.
If you think of school as students enrolled in classes in face-to-face instruction, are we have, our enrollment next year will be small enough to not fill as many sections as we have available to teach. So, that's basically what we're saying. Now, enrollment and running the schedule are iffy things because you look at what the classes that students have enrolled in, and then you look at how you schedule them. And, you know, you may need additional sections to meet student needs. And you want to meet as many students' needs as you can in the classes they selected, especially in required classes. So, we project how many sections we need of a certain class in order to meet the enrollments that we have. And enrollment is students filling out courses, you know, course requests. Right now, we are, we're short some sections. So, I mean, we're short students to fill sections. We're, we have more sections available than students. And, but, you know, we recognize that when we have four high school students, or four high school grades all graduating under performance-based graduation requirements, we're going to need people that aren't locked into 100% direct instruction classes all the time because they're going to be in those mentoring roles. So, we're trying to balance that need, but looking at the fact that we will have, you know, about 330 high school students in the building next year. Middle school looks exactly the same because we only have the eight content teachers.
Actually, I think 334 total, 300 in the building.
300 in the building, right.
So, Steph's absolutely right. But what, when you start talking about morphing a teacher's job responsibilities, that's also, has to be accounted for, I would think, in the negotiations of the teacher contract, I would think, too. Am I right? No, if we morph teachers' responsibilities and pay them for these more, these changed responsibilities, is that a contractual, a point of negotiation in contracts? Like, instead of teaching, you're going to be mentoring. I look at it that way. No, I'm not trying to change the salary.
There's nothing in the contract that says a full-time teacher is six sections, so that's dependent on the classes.
Does that answer your question?
I think it's a conversation maybe for you and I to have directly. Thank you.
I have all, we have all the data, so.
So, you passed this out. This is the projection for fiscal year '14. Are there any comments to go with this other than the information and the run rates?
No.
Okay. With the document, if you didn't get one of these, the document is basically a run rate for fiscal year '14. The projection for '14 is a deficit of $487,000. And the fiscal year '13 deficit is 273, for a total of $761,000. If I can answer, I will.
I bet you can. Because I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure. The fiscal year '13 deficit is half of the deficit we were talking about earlier this year that we decided not to pay off, so it goes into next year. Added to what we think is the deficit in the running budget, so the total deficit is 3.4 million.
If we continue to decide to retire that FY '13 deficit over two years, then this is accurate, or this is correct to include that number. Sorry, I answered instead.
That's all right. Are we going to say it at the same time? So, that's, that's, oh, Jeff?
I don't have my final with you, but my recollection is there's no change to this forecast from what we reviewed last month.
It doesn't look different to me, but-
It looks to be about the same.
Yeah.
And I regret that I had to be late, and I don't know what's been covered. But the point I would make and what I've been wrestling with is, I am very uncomfortable looking at this and seeing that for FY '16, we're setting ourselves up to have to cover almost $800,000.
If anything else changes, yeah.
And so, as we prepare for our budget workshop, and so that it doesn't come as a surprise, I'm going to be asking that we take a hard look at that decision about spreading FY '13 over two years and, in fact, make our problem worse for FY '15 by trying to deal with it in one fell swoop because it's not going to get any easier. In fact, I mean, this is unbearable. I don't know how we would deal with this magnitude, which, if life has any experience, is going to get worse before it's over. So, just as a precursor, I think it gets harder for our next discussion of FY '15.
Just so you know, our discussion earlier over the phone, I did read that paragraph that listed the things that you thought should happen. So, that was one of the, one of the things that you felt needed to happen, and that is we need to get rid of the deficit in one year. Any other questions or comments? Glory, you're, I'm okay to do what I'm about to do? Okay. Please drive safely. I'd like to adjourn this meeting.